...webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other individuals in the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting. As well, a reminder that all electronic devices are to be switched to a non-audible function during committee meetings. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to our agenda?
Yes, Counselor, through you. Item 7.4, there's a small typographical error in subsection A. It should read Report Number CM17006. Notice is motion. An added item 10.1, a lease agreement for the Ancaster Society of the Performing Arts Corporation at 357 Wilson Street in Ancaster. 9.1, development charge demolition credit for Parkland demolition fee credit for 6 Falcon Road. This matter has been removed from today's agenda as it is on the July 12th AFNA agenda. As well, private and confidential, item 12.2, 2018 rate applications by Hydro One Inc. and Electra Utilities Corporation. The report number there just needs a minor adjustment as well. It should read LS17023, PW17053A. Report CM17014, respecting the disposition of city own lands in Waterdon, Waterdown, sorry. A confidential motion respecting this matter has also been added.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Moved by Counselor Farr, seconded by Counselor Green. All those in favor, carried. Declarations of interest, are there any? Seeing none, approval of minutes of previous meeting, may I please have a motion to approve that June 21st minutes is presented? Moved by Counselor Marula, seconded by Counselor Jackson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Committee, what is the wish respecting item 4.1? It's moved, moved by the mayor, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor? Carried. Consent items, members of committee, you have before you consent items 5.1A and B and 5.2. Moved by Counselor Johnson, second, oh, Counselor Ferguson, you have a question? Oh, no, and seconded by Counselor Green?
Just on item 5.2.
Your microphone, Counselor, please? Oh, sorry, it is on.
That's okay. Through you, just a question on that. We have, we've been talking a lot about stormwater runoff and stormwater management. What in these programs are we going to see in terms of reduction or enhancements? I've read through the report, but is this leave us open for other ideas or for pilot projects on that? Through you, to Dan.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the answer is yes. As far as this specific funding program, though, these were the projects that we had to put forward, we are undertaking a citywide flooding and drainage master plan that will likely identify a number of capital projects with respect to stormwater to make the city more resilient going forward. But for the timelines that were associated with this program itself, these were the projects that we felt we could get done on time.
Madam Deputy Mayor, through you to Dan. Dan, so, I know for us in our ward, like where everybody wants to convert their lawns into driveways because we don't have enough parking and all that stuff. And there's new technologies now for permeable, resilient kind of driveways. Is there any space for us, maybe not in this tranche of funding, but in future, to look at pilot programs that would incentivize people that when they're looking to redo their pavements, that we look at having them be stormwater friendly as opposed to concrete?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, yeah, low-impact developments, standards and tactics certainly include permeable paving and rain gardens and that kind of thing. I'm not aware of any funding from the province that we could access that would provide grants to homeowners, if that's what you're suggesting. But we're, I would say, we're always keeping an eye out for those types of things if we can access that type of funding.
Is there, is there not anything through leads? Like, when you're doing new designs and new builds, that qualification, is there anything in there that would account for stormwater?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I believe there is, when you're talking about new construction.
New, okay. I'll leave that to a future motion that'll be forthcoming that relates specifically to driveways and the opportunity for stormwater management there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Partridge?
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And through you to Dan. Dan, on appendix A on the list, there's two projects on there. The one about halfway down is the construction of the new Linden water treatment system, and the completion date is scheduled for March 2019. Can you just remind me since, because I'm now looking after Counselor Pesuda's ward along with Counselor Ferguson, were there public meetings held for that particular project?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, there's been an number of meetings and communication with the community out there. I don't believe there's any outstanding meetings to be held now.
Okay, but, so is the answer to my question yes?
Yeah, there have been meetings, absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the next one down, and I seem to remember for the Freilton Water Tower project, has there been communication to the residents about that upgrade or a public meeting of any kind?
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, if I could get back to you after, after committee, I can confirm that for you.
I would appreciate that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion to receive, move by Counselor, sorry, moved by the mayor and seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor, carried. Moving on to item 6.1, I would like to call upon Ian Hamilton of the Hamilton Port Authorities to speak to item 6.1.
Good morning. Thank you very much for allowing us to address you. Really, it's probably long overdue that the Port Authorities had the chance to talk you through where we're up to and facility. But, and in conjunction with the city, we've explored quite a few other areas and did a project with the city earlier in the year on refrigerated warehousing and customs pre-clearance. So we still see a lot of opportunities to continue to grow in the sector and support the city's effort. The other, another area that we've really addressed this year and really looked at closely and again through the land use plan and through outreach programs was engaging with our community. And particularly on the, on the land use plan, we were really able to hear back what kind of things that the community was looking for. And one of the big ones was transparency, what goes on behind the gates. So since then, we've tried our best to try to work with the hub groups, educate them, give people insights into what we do, and which is probably one of the biggest reasons I'm standing here right now. And also, and we've got a few other initiatives. They, on July 22nd, we've chartered the Harbor Queen and making all the, all the seats available to the local North End residents in hopes of showing them around the port and giving them some insight in what goes on, goes on behind the, behind the gates. Unfortunately, for security reasons, we are, we are stuck with the gates. But at the end, we can, we're doing everything we can to try to engage with our, with our community a little bit, a little bit more. We've also heard very loud and clear that people wanted access to the water. And again, there's only so much we can do, but one of the initiatives is we're going to put a lookout tower on Pier 15 where the new boat storage is and give people a chance to go up the lookout tower and see out into the harbor and particularly see the construction going on at the Randall Reef Project. We've got some projects on greening the port. We've, we've got a clear plan now, what we're doing with Sherman Inlet, in that the facility is the, working now to create a plan to address the DFO's concerns over some of the area that was improperly filled. And then we're going to leave the area as a spot of natural, natural vegetation, naturalization. We've just put in a pollination garden, which is the first one in industrial Hamilton. And the other big one that we heard was air quality. And this is probably the single largest concern that we heard from the residents in the community. And we're doing everything we can to address it, both our tenants and ourselves. And in the last probably six months, there's been about $3 million invested by our tenants and the Port Authority or committed to those investments to address, address the dust and the air quality issues. In particular, both of the new G3 and Parish and Heimbecker are putting million-dollar spouts in to minimize the amount of dust being emitted when they load the, load the vessels. So we certainly hear loud and, loud and clear, and I was with Counselor Collins last week, meeting with a community group on the Beach Strip to try to figure out ways that we can continue to, to address that. We, again, the Tall Ships was a wonderful success and a great way to show how the city and the port can work together in, in developing community relationships and celebrating the maritime history. Community investments, there's a kind of a long list up there, but just to kind of put it into, into scale, about 4% of our net income goes to, goes to community investments and donations through benefit and kind and direct cash. And you can see a list of the, of the various different ones, different charities we support. And that's about 222,000 in 2016 and amounts to over a million dollars in the last, in the last five years. So we're, we're really focused on that and see, see big opportunities. So probably the key and why we're here today is the, we're very, very proud of the relationship we have with the, with the City of Hamilton. I have the chance of sitting with the other 18, 18 Port Authorities, and I don't, I don't believe there's any Port Authority and city that has a stronger relationship. There's certainly, certainly hiccups in every, in every relationship, just ask my wife. But the reality of it is, I think overall, we, we do work very, very well together. I think it's important now that we, particularly on the cusp of Stelco, that we, we clearly share, share a vision and develop a vision together, identify what our roles are, and figure out how, how the best way to collaborate for our, for our mutual benefit. But it's, you've certainly got a commitment from us. We have a strong relationship working with the city every day, whether it be on economic development or, or working with things like the Tall Ship Festival. But, and we think we've got a lot to, to offer to allow Hamilton to continue to thrive. So that's sort of the point I wanted to, wanted to make, and then hopefully leave it up to you guys to ask some, ask some questions.
Speaker's list, Counselor Marula, Counselor Green, Counselor Partridge, Counselor Farr. Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and many thanks to Ian for the presentation. I'd like to start off firstly by, and I think Ian recognizes the history with respect to the Port Authority and the city. I think in meeting with Ian and Sandy, our appointee from the city, clearly, we went to a very thorough discussion surrounding that history and where we are today and where we're headed in the future. And recognizing that not all industry is created, are created equal, I think we, we came to an agreement that the planning process with the city is something that is important not only to us, but is now something that you have, have understood with respect to the vision over the port and how it plays a role in, in your mandate of offering value to the port community as illustrated in your mandate. So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, with respect to our discussion and the understanding that you would work with the city planning department with respect to future applications, where does that presently stand from a formal perspective, from, from your perspective?
Yeah, so there's probably two, two areas of that. One is the land use plan, which, which again sort of outlines the, the big picture, although it's not a, not a regulatory document as such, but it's important. So we went through the process last year of communicating and ran a number of open houses and solicited literally hundreds of opinions. So that's helping us to, to develop that. As a result of that, we're now working with, with Joanne's group to actually establish what the official zoning is going to be for those portlands. And out of the gate, we see no, no reason why we're not going to be successful in putting, putting that piece, that piece of the puzzle together.
Okay, because I think, Madam Deputy Mayor, what's really essential here is if we're on the same page with respect to pursuing applications through our planning department and meeting the same threshold on, with respect to all variables, it really is a significant, significant movement towards enhancing not only the Port Authority's functioning, but more particularly, the enhancement of the entire community as a whole and meeting our objectives in our long-term vision. So from your strategic, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, from your strategic plan to ours, marrying the two and basically following our planning process is all we're really asking. And the fact that you're committed to that, to me, is something I applaud strongly because, frankly, prior to your leadership, that, even that that discussion didn't exist. So, so Madam Deputy Mayor, I think it's important, it's something that we can't overstate, and I want to thank Ian, your involvement, your recognition of the importance of that and how we're going to move forward, particularly on the Stelco lands, in ensuring that the city plays a vital role in developing those lands in conjunction with our vision and our planning department. So with that commitment, I just want to applaud you, sir, and thank you for, for that, for that fact. So thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green?
Thank you, and I've certainly, I would say that I've certainly experienced a different type of renewed engagement in the community, Ian, through you. A more cynical person, though, might say this newfound focus towards collaboration is because of the city's position with the Stelco lands. I'm not going to say that I'm that cynical. I'll say that you're, you would have done it no matter what. But you made a very interesting point when you answered, does the city zoning apply to portlands? You said it applies to current, could you just maybe restate what that answer was?
So all the current uses are compliant with the existing zoning bylaws that, for the City of Hamilton.
That is an interesting answer. So I guess I'll ask you in like a yes or no format. Does the city zoning apply to portlands?
It's a, it's an interesting question, Ian. The areas that are mandated under the Cannon and Marine Act, which cover off on, specifically on the marine transportation and the logistics component of the port, those have the ability to exist outside of the zoning. And that's, that's consistent throughout all of federal agencies, whether it be an airport or whether it be, be a port throughout the, throughout the country. What our commitment is, is to do everything we can to create the zoning bylaws that'll mean that those activities would be covered by the zoning so that there would be consistency.
So the answer is currently no?
I think the answer, I think the answer would be in certain situations, we have the ability to operate outside of the zoning bylaws, and we were, we're very hesitant to use those powers. But in a lot of situations, we would operate within the zoning bylaws. So it's, it depends on the use.
And I appreciate that. I picked up on that as an interesting way to answer that question. And I know with your predecessor and previous conversations, there was even less a willingness and openness to even consider the guidelines, as was outlined by Counselor Marula. But you talk about the cooperative approach to Stelco lands, and you and I have talked about this, and at the time, I think perhaps the circumstances were different in terms of our understanding as to who might have the lead on that. And now I think we're, it's becoming more clear the city will be playing an even greater role and thus an even greater need for you to cooperate. So I can certainly appreciate that. In your mission, vision and values, you talked about stakeholders. Could you just for a moment talk about who the port community is and what is the benefit to your other stakeholders? Who are the stakeholders?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that because we, we debated long and hard in trying to figure out how we, whether we call everybody a stakeholder or we split it up. And we chose the port community, and that refers specifically to the, to the neighborhoods adjacent to the port. It refers to probably the City of Hamilton, who has a huge role with us, and also refers to our, our 130 customers and further 500 users. So we describe that as our port community. But on top of all of that, our other stakeholders include the province of Ontario, the 28,000 farmers that operate in Ontario, all of these guys. But we wanted to clearly show that there was two categories, and that port community category, which would certainly include your ward, is, is one that we're prioritizing.
And as I heard-
And along with our customers, I want to be clear with that as well.
And as I heard, you referred to the 2000 memorandum of understanding between the city and the port as it related to economic development. Also included in that MOA, or MOU, was the Sherman Inlet. And I'm hearing now that your direction is to turn it into a, into a re-greened space, which is, which is nice to hear, perhaps with a, with a lookout tower. But under the MOU, was it not to be returned to an access point for the city?
Yeah, I think, I think it's a different document you're referring to.
Okay.
And that was the Hamilton Port Authority Land Use Plan that existed now almost a decade old. And at the time, that was prior to the, to be honest, the bombing of the 9/11 and changes in all of the maritime security that exists at the, at the ports that regulate us now. We also looked at it and the, it's still, it's still an area of stormwater overflow through the, through the Sherman Inlet. And when we added it up all, we decided that the safest and the securest way to do with it was to fulfill our obligations under the DFO and restore it and then naturally revegetate it, but find a different way to give, to give the residents access to the water, which is why we're looking at the-
To a lookout tower, essentially. It would be looking out over the Sherman Inlet-
Yeah.
-as it becomes regenerated?
It's actually, you can see the edge of the Sherman Inlet from it, but it'll be on the water side as opposed to the Sherman Inlet, so you'll be looking right out over the bay. And you'll, right now, you'll be able to see the, the construction of the, of the Randall Reef Project, which, I should have had a map with me, but it, adjacent to the, to the Sherman Inlet.
Okay. Well, I certainly appreciate being able to expand on some of those questions as I- With intent in terms of developments, I do have to say, though, I appreciate the, the way in which both you and Larissa and others from, from down at the port are engaging in the community and consistently just staying in conversation, even if we don't always agree on things. I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Partridge, followed by Counselor Farr, the mayor, and Counselor Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Ian, welcome, and to the others from your team up there as well. Thank you very much. I have a couple of questions. You, you did mention that you need more land and, but you didn't actually specify how much available land you have currently. Could you expand on that for me, please?
Right now, we've, so our, our port property is roughly 650 acres.
Right.
And we probably have about 17 acres available today.
Wow.
And we need to, this is where I refer to some of the investments in our current assets. We need to invest quite a bit of money to get those up to development, development level. We had a project on there, which you'll all be familiar with, which was the Port Fuels Project, which is no longer on the site. And so now we're, we're investing in, in cleaning that up and ripping down some buildings. So that'll create about 17 acres, and that's, and that's really the end of, the end of what we've got available.
That's very tight indeed. Now, you made a comment about, well, on this slide, 20% better wage than the Ontario average. Does that apply to just the Port Authority itself as an entity? Or is that-
No.
-all of the employers and businesses that are located on your lands?
That's the 2,100 people located on our property.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And on the next slide, the G3 Canada Limited, the new grain terminal, can you, the heading is 90 million in private sector investment, but what is the value of that investment approximately?
That one is roughly 50 million.
And when is that going to start?
It started a month and a half ago.
Okay.
And their grand opening was two weeks ago.
So that's very much a good news story for, for, for the Hamilton port.
It's fantastic. And if you go through the facility, they've done a lot of, they've, A, they've put a million dollars into their spout alone to reduce the risk of dust, which is fantastic, but also they've created a staging area so that all the trucks are taken off the roads and staged on their own property, which is another increasing issue as we get busier and busier, is trying to deal with that truck traffic. So the trucks are going to be able to go through that facility a lot faster than anywhere else, and it's, and it's cleaner now. The, it's just, just a case of they go through different generations, but this is truly the, the cutting edge on, on grain terminal.
Yeah, and that's very much good news. I mean, I don't think there's a ward in the city that doesn't deal with, with truck traffic issues and certainly down at, down at the port. Good news about the 28,000 farmers that are supported, and that's throughout Ontario?
Yeah, yeah, there's actually, and it's 20,000 farms, so-
Farms.
Probably, probably 50, 50,000 farmers that would be, would be supported, so.
Well, and I appreciate you unpacking that a little bit because, of course, you know, Flambrow being mostly rural, mostly farmland, and agribusiness is hugely important to us. And so, you know, looking at the expansion plans for, for Parish and Heimbecker and certainly any other businesses down there that, that support the agribusiness, I mean, it's hugely important to the City of Hamilton. So I appreciate those answers. And Madam Deputy Mayor, I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you.
Counselor Farr?
Thank you. Hi, Ian, good to see you again, and very much appreciating your engagement here today. And of course, in advance, I know you met with a lot of counselors. I'm not sure if today is an answer to a motion from a little while ago where we invited you and the good people at the Port Authority to come speak to us, but regardless, it's reassuring to hear you up top say this is the first of many annual visits or regular visits. So thanks for that. You are a key player with the 2,100 jobs and, of course, all paying well above the Ontario average. One of my questions was already answered. On Randall Reef, what can you tell us on, what's the square acreage there, through you, Chair, and what is your planned use as, I believe you're going to be the landlords of that particular reef once it's through?
Yeah, so the, Bill's up here, Bill probably knows the numbers right off the top of us. Is it 13 acres, Bill?
15 acres.
15 acres. So the plan would be, once that is, is finished developing, on the north, north edge of it, there'll be some form of greening from the, from the water side. On the south edge of it, there'll be a dock wall, and it'll be a full functioning marine asset.
So it'll be a marine use, so dry dock type of use through you, Chair, for the 15 acres?
No, I think that, well, right now, the dry docks are on the, on the north side of the existing Pier 15.
Pier 15.
And then on this, this would be for cargo.
For cargo.
For cargo coming through. And I think this is part of the Pier 15 development, and we believe that through the development of this facility, we've got a container terminal, empty container terminal, that we're hoping to see come onto there, but it'll allow Hamilton to get more involved into the fast-moving consumer goods as opposed to the bulk commodities. So with that rail connection. So we think that this is a wonderful tool to, to leverage that.
Great, great. Through, through you, Chair, to Ian, I think I know of one tenant, Windermere Basin tenant, who has been relocated recently. And given that we have 15 online common acres with the Randall Reef once through, 17 here and there in bits and pieces of many, many acres that you've filled, are there other relocation opportunities for existing tenants that you look at? Or do you continue to look at relocation where you could work with ECT Dev? You could maybe relocate within the confines of the City of Hamilton, one of our industrial parks, thus creating more opportunities for you and more acreage for you through you, Chair?
Yeah, there are, there are opportunities, and I think it's, this is where it's, it's exciting time because we really want to ensure that the interface between ourselves and the community is, is the best it possibly can be. And as, as more land gets created or, or acquired, then it's possible for us to move, move our tenant base around, open up new opportunities so that we can, we can put our, put our customers in a position which would be the least disruptive for the, for the community and, and best for, for everyone. So there is great opportunities, and even down the road, there's chances for the city to possibly look at, particularly with the Stelco lands, to say, is there a way that we can move one industry out of this area, onto this area and open this one up for a more residential and recreational use?
I mean, finally, to be parochial, and it's not about Parish and Heimbecker, but I love our conversations, and they're good people. I enjoy meeting with them as well. And they work well with the community as, in addition. Through you, Chair, I have been looking at for some time, informally and somewhat formally, truck traffic through the core. We have some truck routes. Clearly, most are going to the industrial lands. I'm talking about 18-wheelers or greater. I've done some counts in the past, in the summer of 2015 or 16. I had a summer student sit out on Cannon Street and Main Street a week at a time for each, counted not as many trucks as I, I had thought, or some of the folks that I've spoken to since had thought, roughly about 60 trucks per day. But all of them appear to be heading away from or into the industrial core area, the portlands. Is there an opportunity down the road for us, you and I and others in the community to work together at, first, trying to pinpoint where exactly these, the destinations are, where the points of origins are for this truck traffic, number one? And number two, if applicable or doable through you, Chair, trying to work with some of those industries on maybe utilizing more Burlington Street, hence gateways to Toronto, Windsor Corridor, through Red Hill, as opposed to what I feel sometimes, Ian, is more consuming prospect of cutting through, a big truck cutting through a major urban center that gets busier and busier. Of course, with LRT, it'll be even busier. And all that stopping and going and what that creates, wear and tear on the vehicle and the environment. Is there an opportunity in the future for us to get together and, and see if we can't point to better routes possibly with some of these industries? But first, of course, try to determine where it is these trucks, these 60 trucks on average a day are going and coming from through you, Chair?
Yeah, and we've, two questions. Answer your question, yes. Two responses. One is, one of the things we're doing every day is try to figure out how we can at least stage the trucks on our property so they're not staging along Burlington Street or on Eastport Drive. And that'll take some of the, some of the congestion away. But it's not going to reduce the number of trucks. But Bob Hart is actually on the board of the MITL, and we've engaged with the McMaster Institute of Transportation and Logistics to do a study on the truck flows. And from that study, hopefully, we can find opportunities to change routes or, or minimize the impact on the community. So that's underway now.
So you give me some direction on make a call to MITL. And I appreciate, again, you coming in, Ian. It's always great to meet with you. And I should mention as well, I think she's already been referenced, but our city appointee to the port is also the port's appointee to Waterfront Trust, and I see that Sandy is with us now. She's a valuable member of both the Waterfront Trust and I'm sure your Board of Directors as well. So it's good to see Sandy Sean in the room. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you, Counselor. Good morning, Sandy. Counselor, actually, Mayor Eisenberg-
Thank you, councillor. Good morning, Sandy. Counselor, actually, Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you. And thank you, Ian, for your great presentation and welcome to Sandy. And I think Matt Mokio's up there, the current Chair of the Board, or is it Chair now? Okay. And welcome to the other Port Authority members, Bill and Janet. Bob, you know, I've had some familiarity, as you know, with the port. And, you know, it's always been an awkward kind of dance between the port's mandate from the federal government and the desire for the city to have a more collaborative, cooperative approach. And I think that has changed significantly since 2000. It's had a couple of hills and valleys, but I think we're on a curve now that is, you know, spectacularly good, I think, in terms of how we're collaborating and working together in the common interest of providing jobs and opportunity in our city. I think that's, I think, our common goal. So I thank you for all the work that's happening there. And I think the responsiveness has been quite positive and quite dramatic. And I know, I have no doubt that that will continue with the good leadership of your board and your staff team. I think they're all local folks that care about their community and want to make sure that we do good by our harbor as well as by our kind of business community and economic development. So thank you for all of that great work. You know, what often comes up in the kind of the broader community is, you know, that the Port Authority doesn't provide the kind of jobs per hectare that we might want in other places. So I think that's changing, and maybe you can shed some light on that. But, you know, the worry would be that if we got into a partnership on the Stelco lands, for instance, that the port might want to have a lower jobs per hectare kind of number based on the uses that you might bring there. Warehousing, that kind of thing doesn't tend to have high employment numbers attached to it. So do you want to shed some light on that? I mean, in terms of your current jobs per hectare and what you envision, you know, going forward in terms of future uses if more land becomes available?
Yeah. So probably we run roughly around three jobs, not hectare, but per acre, I think is the calculation we use. And I think certainly from the city's plan that you presented here, you were targeting around 10 on the Stelco properties. So we recognize that there's a gap there. I think where we see the real opportunities for us is in the processing and the advanced manufacturing. So right now, we're very attractive, Hamilton and with the port assets, for bringing in these manufacturing and processing companies, which dramatically increases the jobs per square foot or jobs per acre. Simple examples are, right now, we talked about the crushed seed oils. Some of them come in from Lethbridge. Some of them are actually crushed right here at Bungie. And there's a huge opportunity for bringing in, say, a margarine facility. And this is the types of companies that are going to say, you know what, we can bring our manufacturing here. We can see logistics cost as a result of being adjacent or on port property. So we're a business that deals in bulk commodities. So we're not going to, we're not going to be an IT company down in Toronto who's got 65 people working in 1,000 square feet. That's just not where we are. But we certainly see a trend to move a lot closer to your kind of targeted number of 10 per acre, which I think is very realistic.
Yeah, I think that's great. I think that's important for us to recognize and I think work towards. I think maximizing the employment opportunity out of those lands is, I think, everyone's objective. It's not just a commercial venture. It's also, you know, providing employment in our broader community. So I'm glad to hear that we're kind of on the same page on that. And, you know, beyond, you know, my understanding of how relationships have been with port authorities across the country, Hamilton is actually quite unique. I think we have developed and collaboratively a relationship that is not found in other port authorities across the country, notwithstanding the fact that that was a desire back in 2000 when port authorities were originally created, more cognizant and reflective of broader community issues. That hasn't happened necessarily in other ports. It has happened in very significant ways in Hamilton. So I think, I encourage you, Ian, to continue on with that trend. I think that is spectacular. I think it's good for everybody. And together we can do a lot more, you know, especially in light of the Stelco lands, which I think are imminent opportunity. I think we can come together and create something that is going to create value for our city on the short term and in the long term. So thank you for all that great work and look forward to continuing discussions.
Yeah. And the relationship with the city is hugely important to us. So I think we'll continue to find ways to work together.
Brilliant. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Whitehead?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I certainly have a lot of history on the portland, starting with Bob Morrow days and Sheila Cops, working with those negotiations. And I know that I also was involved in ensuring that our good mayor was appointed on the Port Authority at the time and served some time and experience on the board. A couple of things that I thought I'd be curious about at this point. I'm not sure where the industry is going, what the projections are into the future relative to Toronto, sort of seems to pretty well getting out of the whole port industry, other than primary industry that's still there will be served. But outside of that, I don't think you're seeing a lot more tonnage being shipped to Toronto. So that would put more, I would think, emphasis on the Hamilton port. I think the only other large port may be up in Thunder Bay. Is that correct?
Yeah. So Thunder Bay carries just under 9 million tons last year, and we carry just over 9 million tons. So that's the only other port. But they really are designed to serve the West through the grain shipments, whereas we're designed to serve Ontario.
Now, so the future, technology, shipping, size of cargo, design of ships, docking facilities. And of course, the other thing I've always talked about, and you see it in Chicago, is there's a lot more what they call tourist cruises taking place on the Great Lakes. And, you know, Europeans and all around the world are jumping on these Great Lake cruises. And I don't see a lot of activity on Lake Ontario or certainly in the harbor. Can you shed some light on what's taking place in that industry?
Yeah. So it's, unfortunately, we're still restricted by the size of the locks coming in between, particularly between Montreal and Lake Ontario. So you can only get a certain ship inside of it. So you've got to deal with those smaller boutique type of ships. Up until now, most of the ships that have come in have come into Toronto a few years ago. And we worked closely with the city on it. A company named Blount did come into Hamilton. I think they did two calls. And we kind of did the best we could. And we had them out to the Royal Botanical Gardens and then met the ship down in Niagara Falls. So there is some opportunity. As Hamilton becomes more of a destination for tourism, then I think that you can start to encourage some of the ships to come in from Toronto. In terms of your bigger question, not just on the tourism, but on the future of the port, so it's interesting, if you sit and listen to the Minister of Transportation presentations, and they talk about all of their investments in roads and public transit and various different areas. And it's mind-boggling, the billions of dollars that are going to be spent. But the general thing that comes out of it is that we're going to spend all this money as Ontario, and in 15 years, our transportation system is going to be worse than it is today. And right now, the only real capacity that exists is on the water. So I think that right now, the seaway runs at about a 50% utilization. So I think there's a lot of opportunities to increase and move what is today moving on the land onto the water and take advantage of that capacity, whether it be commuter services, but more specifically, certainly in the goods movement side. And that would move Hamilton more up the chain in getting into, again, fast-moving consumer goods and products, and products like that. But that's the challenge. And certainly, if you look at other jurisdictions like in Europe, I wouldn't say they were visionary on their waterways. But the reality of it is, their rail was all committed to passenger traffic. Their roads are gridlocked. So it just forced companies to start to look at the waterways. And I think that's where Ontario is going. And hopefully, the Ontario province will come up with a maritime strategy to support that, or at least part of their greater golden horseshoe multimodal strategy. But that's where, if you're looking 10 years to 15 years down the road, as we're gridlocked on our existing transportation modes, we're going to have to look at more creative ways. And I think water is one of them.
So, and I appreciate that. So understanding that there may be a market, I don't know what kind of study the port has embarked on in regards to the tourism aspect, the cruise ships. And you indicate right now, you can't, the type of ships coming in into the Great Lakes, you don't have the facilities or the infrastructure to accommodate them. So are there plans to build that infrastructure?
No, no. And there's not the demand there to support it. However, certainly, if anyone was going to contemplate it, we'd be delighted to assist on the security side and the vessel management side. But the Pier 8 location would probably make a lot more sense than trying to bring a tourist ship into an industrial port. And I think docking alongside there and somehow integrating with that would be the logical spot to try to bring in tourists.
So it would be citywide policy without process?
Yeah, yeah. And we would, again, we would participate from, certainly from the vessel security, bringing the vessels in, all of the management on the vessel side of it. But in terms of where that terminal is located, I think it makes more sense to have it in a sort of a commercial residential area, recreational area than an industrial port.
More recently, there's been discussions and experiments about, back to, you talked about Europe, a lot of passenger service on the trains and the waterway is the way to go. But certainly, they're looking at opportunities in regards to moving people in the water. The Toronto line is getting gridlocked. They've experimented with certain vehicles to go across, I know it's from St. Catherine's to Toronto. Has there been any serious discussion and dialogue about the feasibility of having people movers from Hamilton crosswater to TO?
We, a few years back, we did engage with Metrolinks to try to figure out whether they would support that type of project as they were developing their corridors out towards the Niagara Falls Way. And unfortunately, they just couldn't find a business model that could move enough passengers in that mass transit. I think there is a possibility for a niche market. And as you brought up earlier, emerging technologies. But certainly, Elon Musk is working with something called a Hyperloop, which would be a tube that would run pods through. And I think something like that could be, could be 20 years down the road, but it could be a neat way to move people under the lake into Toronto very quickly and efficiently.
I appreciate. Now, the last question I have is, clearly, we've had significant damage as a result of the high water levels in the Great Lake system. And I just came from up north and having the same experiences with even the small lakes. I'm trying to understand, a lot of the lands in our industrial core, like Nashville Steel Card, for example, isn't that, are recovered water lots that were landfilled to accommodate the industry? What can you share with us in regards to what has transpired? Is there significant costs? Is there issues as a result of the high water level?
Yeah, there are. For example, on the Vopak Dock, the water was about three inches below the dock line. And when the vessels were coming in, the surge of the water was going up onshore, which we had to work with the MOECC to ensure that that water was clean to pump it back in the harbor rather than put it onto the stormwater system. So what's happening now is, last year, at this time, they were putting about 7,000 cubic meters per second of water through the dams near Cornwall. This year, they're at 10,400 cubic meters per second. And this is the effort to try to reduce it. Unfortunately, Lake Ontario, everything feeds into Lake Ontario. So we're going to be the last to see the sizable improvements. It's about as far as we could push it and still allow the waters to be navigable, because that speeded up the currents in the St. Lawrence River by three to five knots, which we've put in, the St. Lawrence Seaway's actually put in emergency assist tugs to try to ensure that the vessels do, can still navigate through it. So that's what we're doing to try to reduce the levels. I think it's had a cost, particularly probably on the recreational side, on the marina side, more than anywhere else. But it's trying to find that balance of how do we get the water levels down, but still allow us to keep our trade corridors open. And so we've been working with the US Joint Staff, Joint State Staff or something like that, and have expressed our concerns and said, okay, we got to try to find a medium on this issue.
So there's no huge red flag issues from a capital point of view that may involve the city in respect to what has transpired over the last few, several months with the high water levels?
We certainly don't have an ask. And you may be referring to what was suggested in Toronto in their recent study. But if this carries on, and through global warming, it's logical it will, then there certainly be long-term issues in terms of dock wall heights and where your chart datum is going to move to and how you address that. But at this stage, we haven't put a capital plan together. But it is something we're concerned about.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you very much, Madam Chair. My comments are going to be very summary of what the mayor's is. And we are very proud of the relationship we have with the Port Authority. And as we know, long before my time, in fact, probably most people on council's time, it wasn't a very good relationship. And so to you and your board and your predecessor, I think you've come a long way in improving that relationship. I think the Stelco lands possess probably the biggest opportunity that this city has seen as far as refurbishing contaminated industrial lands. And the provinces stepped up and took, broke the big nut by agreeing to backstop that cleanup to allow us to move forward. So it's a great opportunity for both of us to be able to, it's an exciting opportunity, to be able to clean up those lands and get them back into productive use and where their taxes are being paid and people are being employed. My only question to you is, last time a tour was offered to members of the city council, I remember driving out to former Stelco lands that was vacant, that was serviced by heavy rail. And you were excited about bringing in a container facility. And in fact, you were working on the dock at the time we were there to do that, because you had quick access to the Queen E for trucks, you had, you know, heavy rail to be able to move those containers out. And it seems to install, in fact, I was cruising around the harbor yesterday, I drove down there, and nothing seems to be happening. Have you given up on that opportunity?
Given up? No. That would have been at Pier 22. And that was, that plan was probably even mothballed before I joined the Port Authority nine years ago. But the, as I said, we do have a kind of two different initiatives. About seven years ago, eight years ago, we announced a C3 service, which was a port-sponsored service which ran containers from Hamilton to Montreal to link in with that. The challenges we had were, the rail was very, very competitive and didn't want to see their customers moving over to our service. And we had the seasonality where the seaway actually closes for three months of the year. So it was difficult to get the critical mass to support the project in the long term. But what we're doing now is we're working at, the first would be, is to try to get containers into Hamilton as a container depot. And that would be the large shipping lines within store crate facilities here. And it's very, very important because right now, if you want to go and ship a container out of Hamilton or one of your manufactured products, you've got to go into Brampton or into Vaughan to pick up that empty container and bring it back. So you're adding $300, $400 on to your container unit cost. So the first step can be to start to create that kind of depot and that container mentality here. Start to get some of the trucking companies to invest in the right equipment to handle containers. From there, I think the shipping opportunities will start. But the one benefit is going to be, it's going to make Hamilton more competitive on any of these containerized types of products, which we aren't really competitive today.
Okay. I think the main answer I heard there is that rail's become quite competitive now, and they can move from Montreal into Hamilton or into Toronto quite competitively by rail, which is sort of different than what we've understood about rail in the past. How it's, you know, it's not reliable and it's not cheap. But that's shifted, has it?
It's been, no, well, I don't know what information you had 10 years ago, but it certainly, certainly when we look at it, the rail service isn't bad. They do have a monopoly. And what happens is all the stuff coming out of Montreal and coming from the east of Canada travels through Toronto. So they're able to sort of leverage those trains for giving competitive rates into Toronto. But then everything for Hamilton gets distributed out of, well, Vaughan area and Brampton area. So there's, Hamilton, there's still an opportunity because you've got that extra trucking cost. And as congestion increases, the bringing containers directly to Hamilton, the value proposition is going to increase as well.
And of course, coming with truck to Vaughan, you run into that awful congestion around the Toronto area too. And your trucks are parked over in the Queen E or the 401, which would give you competitive energy. I was just curious about the follow-up of that, because you were quite assertive about it the last time I was, had the opportunity to take a tour of the ports. But thanks for all your great work. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. And Mayor Eisenberger, would you take the chair? I have a question before we go to second-time speakers, councillor Green. Good morning.
Morning.
My question is actually along the line of what councillor Whitehead and councillor Ferguson raised, and that is the movement of goods to and from the Port Authority. And recently, I was speaking with actually a member of the agricultural sector who said that is becoming increasingly more of a challenge because of the congestion on our highways. Can you speak to that and the concerns of your tenants in terms of moving the goods from the port to the port on our roads, our current structure?
Yeah. So I think you're exactly right. And that's one of the areas that certainly, for example, G3, the way they invested, they invested to try to improve that truck flow once you get to Hamilton. But the road congestion is going to continue to be a problem for all of Ontario and the Ontario economy. And unless we find alternate modes to move goods, the congestion's going to continue to increase, which will probably mean smaller distribution centers in multiple locations as opposed to one big giant distribution center that's subject to all of those traffic delays. In terms of the short term, most of the farmers, they have a concern about it. But compared to, by having to by having this cluster in Hamilton, they're currently in a lot better position than they were by, in previous situations where they had a, a combination of, of going into Port Colburn, or they had Owen Sound, and they had various other mini, mini facilities to receive. So they are quite delighted having this cluster where they've got the, the choice of three different terminals to bring their agricultural products in. So overall, we're, we're improving the situation, but the increased congestion is going to, going to be an issue.
Thank you. Through the chair, you mentioned earlier that you were already, you were going to be looking at traffic flow. Do you have any idea where most of your goods are, are heading to? Are they heading towards Windsor? Are they heading to the Peace Bridge? Are they heading towards Toronto?
So from the agricultural side is where we're handling over a million tons of agri products. So they all come into the port, and then everything gets exited from the port by vessel. So they're all coming from the southern Ontario farms. And that's the, that's the single biggest traffic flow that we're, we're looking at today.
Through the chair, which route is that? Are they coming in off the 403?
They would be coming, they would be coming in off of the 403, but they would always, all would come in on Burlington Street, off of the 2W, not, not through the city.
Thank you, those are my questions, and I'll take the chair back. Thank you councillor Green for a second time.
Thank you very much, madam deputy mayor. Hearing lots of great conversations around collaborating on the Stelco lands. In your myth-bester FAQs, you had mentioned that the port authority does not rely on K zoning to attract businesses, and that you are more in sync with our Deloitte study. So through you, madam deputy mayor, given that, what would you see as the potential? We heard councillor Ferguson talking about the port lands and this kind of unique opportunity with Stelco. What would you see to be the potential type of zoning that could be applied for the, for the new Stelco lands, should they be remediated in, in any kind of way?
Well, the, the one we're most familiar with is the zoning that's been proposed for the existing port authority property. And that allows a combination of material handling and the advanced manufacturing to, to kind of leverage those transportation assets. And that would be, that would be a perfectly acceptable zoning for the development of that, of that land.
So there's no intention then to apply the kind of lowest use K zoning with these, with the Stelco lands as well?
I don't, I don't see any reason to.
I appreciate that. It's good to get that out there now, because I know from, in, in many of our conversations that, that particular piece, also not just from an environmental and ecological perspective, but even from an economic development perspective, I don't think is the way forward. So I just wanted to make sure that that was on, and, and that the trends for the port are moving away from that and more in sync with our Deloitte, just for clarity, right? For your existing properties?
Yeah, and I think, and I think I'd certainly extend the invitation to you again, I'd love to come and show you around, and I think you'd be pleasantly surprised at the types of businesses that are operating on the actual port property. Quite often, people look at everything along the waterfront and assume it's on the port property. And you'll, you'll discover, and I've heard it mentioned here on a number of occasions, but there's currently only one scrapyard that actually operates on port property, and all other scrapyards in North Hamilton are not on our property.
I know they bite a lot of our neighborhoods in Ward Three, which is why I'm bringing that forward now. And, and certainly, it's not so much as to what is currently there as it was to the past conversations that I had with your predecessor where the attitude and the tone were quite different than what you present. And, you know, I, I do appreciate you taking that more forward-thinking approach. So I'm glad that we had a chance to get that on the record, madam deputy mayor. Thank you for the second time.
Thank you councillor Green. Are there any further questions of the presenter? Perfect, thank you, thank you very much for your presentation. Moved by councillor Ferguson, seconded by councillor Pearson to receive the presentation. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Moving on to 6.2, would Robert Burgess please come forward to speak to item 6.2?
I am here to talk about the courts being swamped and police officers under pressure not to add to it. So they cover up crimes instead of filing charges, and they are being paid by taxpayers' money to do this, so this is a waste of taxpayers' money. I have a website that talks about this, my address is injusticeinontario.ca. It is obstruction of justice for someone to cover up a crime. I have written to the chief of police about this, but nothing happens. And some news media in this city are in bed with the Hamilton police because they will not do a story on my evidence. Back in 2016, I filed a complaint against the chief of police with, with the Police Services Board. And Mr. Ferguson sent my complaint to the OIPRD. And then I explained to him that section 98.2 of the Police Services Act says you're not to do that. And then you dealt with my complaint yourself, and you said you see nothing that changes. You should, why didn't you take my complaint?
Sorry, Mr. Burgess, you cannot speak directly to a member of council. If you have a comment, no names can be used in your presentation. So if you'd like to make a point in general terms, please do, but we do not refer to anyone individually.
Can I say the chair of the Police Services Board?
You may say, you may speak, yes, you may use the position.
Through you?
No, but through me as well, you have to speak to me. But if you have a presentation, just please admit it to your comments regarding your situation.
Okay, so I can't talk about the complaint against the chief?
You may use, in general terms doesn't really allow him to speak to the complaint. I think we may just, if you could, if you could make your comments in very general terms and refer, and not use any names, we'll, we'll try to guide you through your.
What does general terms mean?
That's my point. If you have, do you have a copy of your presentation?
I, I have gone off the speech now.
It's not going to allow him to make any comment about his, his references. Do you have a written copy of your, your comments that we could probably check before?
No.
You don't?
I had, I had a speech, but I've gone past the speech now.
Okay, well, I think that if you want to make a comment, please refrain from using any names, and, and if you're speaking to an injustice, say injustice in general terms, but nothing specific to, to your personal situation.
So I can't talk about my complaint against the chief?
Not here.
Not here? Okay. I'm done then.
And is that all you have for your presentation? May I please have a motion to receive the presentation? Moved by councillor Pearson, seconded by councillor Johnson. Thank you. We're moving on to item 6.3, Anthony Marko, Hamilton and District Labor Council respecting Bill 148 Fair Workplaces Better Jobs Act 2017.
Happy summer. Being a secondary school teacher, you can imagine that a week ago was a good countdown for me, so it's a, it's a good time of year, and I'm glad to be able to be once again in front of you here today. For us, Bill 148 is more than just something which is partisan, it is more than something which is just a political piece. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to revamp not only the Employment Standards Act, but also the Ontario Labor Relations Act. Just to give you a quick history, the OFL, the Ontario Federation of Labor, a few years ago, learned that there was a wish and intent to desire to make some of these reforms. At the time, Minister Kevin Flynn, who's the Minister of Labor, started talking about what would we do if we got into this position, what would we look at? They sent out two experts to consult all over the province for about a year, got a bunch of feedback on two occasions, did one round of feedback, did a second round of feedback. A report came in, which was called the Labor Law Reform: Changing Workplaces Review. And from that, the government sat down and said, here are the changes that we are proposing. There are some things in here that are necessary in reflecting the current face of work in Ontario, which largely has led to a term that we didn't talk about a generation ago, which is precarious work. We talked about part-time work, we talked about casual work, we didn't talk about precarious work, and we definitely didn't include them as almost their own working class, which was the precariat, which is what they've come to be known as. A lot of the things that are put forward in this bill, and why I'm here today is to ask you to endorse, if not the bill itself, a lot of the positions in this bill, is because this isn't about union workers, this is about all workers in the province. This is about everybody being able to find a full-time position that will hopefully allow them to work what we grew up with, which was a 35 or 40-hour work, we can consider that a full-time position. Everyone in this room, I'm sure, knows of somebody who has to work 60, 70, 80 hours a week just to get by on a minimum wage. The document that I've provided, not only in advance and online, but upfront today, is a document that is circulating around the province right now from a grassroots-led group called the 15 in Fairness Group. They have partnered with the OFL on this. And some of the key things that have been proposed in this bill are what is probably the, the biggest flag-raising one for people who are proponents and people who are against it, which is raising the minimum wage to $15 over the next year and a half. I will certainly acknowledge that there are going to be a lot of arguments for and a lot of arguments against. It does, if it goes through, brings $5 billion into the Ontario economy. It allows people who currently have to work two jobs to maybe only have to work one job. It allows people who only have, who are working three jobs to maybe only have to work two jobs. Those alone are reasons, we've done some great work here in the past about talking about raising people out of poverty, and we have huge sections in this city who live in poverty, who are not unemployed, but who are members of the working poor. And these are some of the people that this bill is seeking to help. But beyond that, it also speaks about working conditions as well outside of wages. It speaks about equal pay for equal work between full-time, part-time, and casual workers, including those who work for temp agencies. It speaks to some of the rights that workers could have with regards to shifts. If you've ever worked more than one job before, and you don't know when you can work that second job because you don't know when the shifts are going to happen on your first job, that can become a problem. And that can become problems for single parents, it can become a problem for any worker who has a family and has to now know, am I working tomorrow, am I not working tomorrow? I've been offered a shift at this job, can I take a shift here if I don't know if I'm getting a shift here? This offers some protections with regards to scheduling. It also offers emergency leave. Most places in the province who are not under a contract or a union contract have a very tough time getting emergency leave. This would extend job-protected emergency leave to all workplaces, including an additional 1.7 million workers in small workplaces. It adds some easier accesses to union protection. There are, most of the changes that this bill proposes are, are in the Employment Standards Act and not in the OLLRA, which is what governs unions. But there are a couple in there, and the couple that are in there are really positive with regards to workers who are far afield. So cleaners, security guards, home care and community service workers who might only work on their own or work out in the field all the time. It would be very tough if they wished to organize, for them to actually get the data that they needed for them to meet up with other people. This provides a couple of protections which would allow them to organize if they wanted to and be able to know, how many people do we actually have working in the city? If you're a home care worker, you sometimes don't know how many home care workers are in this area or work for this employer. This would give them some of those protections. It would allow a gateway for them to organize if they wanted to. It certainly doesn't force them to. Another big one which comes up and brings us into closer standards with the rest of the world is a proposed three weeks paid vacation after five years of service. Many know that countries in Europe have, in some places, 10 weeks, 12 weeks vacation, paid vacation. This would bring us up to three after five years of service. It also provides for more inspectors under the Employment Standards Act, which is huge because a lot of employers, which take advantage of being able to play with gray areas in the legislation, it's very tough to police that. It's very tough to say, here's an employer who's following the rules and here's an employer who's not following the rules. There are a lot of positive things in this bill, and there are things which labor considers to be gaps in this bill as well, things that we would improve. And next Friday, next Thursday, they are going to be coming to Hamilton, the Provincial Finance Committee is coming to Hamilton, and they're going to be hearing delegations on this, and they're going to be hearing what we'd like to see, what we support, all of that stuff. And there are things where we are certainly going to go and say, can we please make improvements here to the existing language on the bill? That being said, this is a good baseline. We would like to get at least these things through. We would like the people around, the table here, the people around the room, we would like our city councillors, and labor council basically told me, please go and get our city councillors to say, this is a positive step for workers in Hamilton, not unionized workers, for workers in Hamilton. We've got enough problems with people who are working poor in this city, this is a big step. Many of the arguments that I would make with regards to working poor are the same ones that you heard me getting up and making with regards to living wage. This takes a lot of steps. It takes it out of the hands, in many cases, of city councillors in making that tough decision, because I know many of you agonized over that decision when it came to budget time with regards to city staff and living wage, because I know a lot of you supported the basic idea, but understood that it was a tight budget year. This, quite frankly, takes it out of your hands, for better or for worse, it could become in there, but I can tell you, it's going to impact a huge amount of Ontarians. And for those who think, well, the people who make under minimum wage are really just, you know, kids who are working and casual workers who are working, 60% of people who make minimum wage in Ontario are over age 25. And so that's a huge swath of people. It's not just young kids, it's not just students, it's a lot of people. We would hope that somewhere out of the discussion today, and I will be fully open and transparent here, I have not gone to, I have not come to any of you before today talking about this, saying, you know, will you move this, will you not move this, will you move a motion? I'm hopefully looking for the equivalent of a grassroots motion here after our discussion today to say, we are willing to endorse this, not because it's a liberal bill, not because it says it's this, or this, or this, because it will help working people in Hamilton, plain and simple. And if we can make improvements to it down the line, we hope to do that as well. So I will finish with my presentation there, I will certainly open it up for any questions.
Thank you for that, thank you Anthony. And I'm going to pass the chair over to councillor Whitehead, then it's councillor Green, councillor Whitehead and councillor Partridge. I recently spoke with a number, met with a number of stakeholders about this very issue, and, and it's interesting because many of these people had either small businesses, large businesses, they were in the agricultural sector, and they're very concerned about that massive hike that takes effect in January, and the, the lack of any sort of an incremental increase. And they believe it's actually going to have the opposite effect, that you will see more people who are currently on minimum wage either lose their job or see a cutback in hours. Through the chair, the day after the province announced this, it was coincidental, I was working the Tim Hortons camp day, and I was working the window, and all of the other employees happened to be women, and I asked them about it, what do you think? Is this a good idea or a bad idea? Of the six or seven women, only one who was young, who was a student, loved it. The rest said, we'll lose our jobs, we will automate. I already am the manager, I don't want to see somebody else jump to this, that's not fair. There is a real concern amongst the people who I think this bill is, is supposed to help, that they're going to lose their jobs. I've spoken to owners of Tim Hortons, I've spoken to a small restaurant owner, she said they'll simply automate, all those jobs will be gone. Last week, I was in Lime Ridge Mall, I was stunned at the number of businesses that are shuttering, and those are retail jobs that pay minimum wage. Seattle came out with that same project, that same $15 hike in minimum wage, and they've studied, and it's been a dismal disaster. A lot of these, a lot of these jobs are.
Can you hold on a moment? I just want to remind the people in the audience that courtesy and respect is demanded in this, in this chamber, so to ask that we withhold any comments, thank you.
My question is about, are you, are you concerned that this is going to have the opposite effect on people who are currently making minimum wage?
The reason I'm not concerned about that is twofold, and I'll try and deal with a couple of the points that you brought up.
Sure.
One, specific to Seattle, because it's on my mind right now. The most recent report that came back out of Seattle said that it wasn't as optimistic as it was painted, but there have been about a dozen to 15 studies that have been done over the past couple of years that have said it has had no negligible effect on the economy with regards to inflation or with regards to job loss. So as we both know, studies can come in for one side or it's coming from the other, depending on who commissions the study half the time. So, I mean, I have seen studies on both sides, and most of them I've seen come out on positive, but I will fully cop to the idea that many of us, when we read reports and read studies, also tend to read within our own, what's a better word, echo chamber, and we, we get feeds from people who say, you should read this, you should read this, you should read this, and we tend to read things that maybe go along with our point of view. But I've, all I can say is I've seen more that have spoken to the positive nature of it than to the negative. With regards to small business, all I know from growing up in this city for 48 years is that every small business owner who has ever spoken to me, the bane of their existence has been that big box stores have forced. has been that big-box stores have forced them out. And one of the reasons that big-box stores force small businesses out is because people can't afford to buy at small businesses because they don't have the buying power that a big-box store has. If wages increase and people have the ability to buy local at a small business, I think most people choose to buy at a small business. The reason why superstores are so successful is because they can afford to sell a t-shirt for $5. I would much rather go to a local business with a local business owner and pay $10 for that t-shirt or $15 for that t-shirt. But if I'm living hand-to-mouth because I am working poor, I can't even make that choice. And so I'm not saying that the immediate turnaround during the increase is going to immediately result in a grand boon to small businesses. But I will say this: We've tried trickle-down economics for about the past generation, and it's gotten us to a point where small businesses are complaining that they can barely survive right now. Maybe it's time to flip it upside down and do trickle-up economics, where the money comes into the workers' hands so that they can now go out and spend it. It's something that we haven't tried in about a generation. It's something that had been tried in the past. We used to have a corporate tax rate of over 50%, 75% if you go back long enough, up to 90%. We don't have that anymore. Purchasing power is largely going to determine small businesses' success in a city. And if workers don't have enough money to spend, then that's going to be the problem. And I think the turnaround that's really going to happen, and it will especially benefit a city like Hamilton, is there are so many shuttered places that exist in Hamilton already. What a fantastic opportunity to give working people in Hamilton spending power, which will then generate more small businesses that actually exist around our city. Because when I was just driving down Barton Street the other day, and, you know, many of the ward councillors who have Barton Street that goes through, and you see blocks upon blocks upon blocks of shuttered opportunities for businesses. One of the reasons they can't open is because a lot of people in that part of the city are working poor, working two or three jobs, and just don't have the purchasing power down there to make those purchases. So I think there is an opportunity here. I think the system we've been using hasn't worked. I think that if a small business is on the brink that much to begin with, I think that speaks to where the system has been and not necessarily where the system is going. I'm not saying that any system which is going to come out of this is perfect. I'm saying that I believe that this is something which could be transformational, not just in the city but in the province, in the same kind of discussions that we had with regards to living wage and the ability to bring city workers up if they were below living wage. This does it for all Ontarians. I think the investment in the economy now comes at the buying level as opposed to from the other side.
Thank you for that. Through the chair, have you spoken to... I'm just using Tim Hortons because, of course, of the connection to Hamilton and the number of Tim Hortons in the city. Have you sat down and spoken with any of the owners about the impact it will have on their bottom line?
Not specifically to Tim Hortons owners, no. But I will say this, that for the most part, the people that get in touch with me tend to be from union reps themselves and very rarely even a business representative of a union shop, because as an umbrella group for a whole bunch of unions, it would be rare that, say, a business owner would contact me and say, "Oh, you happen to be the Labor Council president. Can you, you know, give us your feedback on this?" So I would be happy to sit down with them if they wished. But I also know with regards to the automation argument that you brought up earlier, automation has been starting in fast food for, you know, started years ago, and, I mean, most of the McDonald's that you walk into now have automation, and this was well before discussions of raising minimum wage or not. Corporations, whether they be Tim Hortons and McDonald's, have a fiduciary responsibility to maximise their profits, and they're going to do so in any means possible. And if that means automation, then they're going to do automation. So I would certainly welcome the opportunity to sit down with people from Tim Hortons, and there would be a bunch of people who would be happy with regards to... On Labor Council, I'm sure, to be at that meeting as well and have a discussion as to the support that they get from, you know, 90% of the Hamiltonians out there. Try and get another fast coffee in Hamilton other than Tim Hortons, and most people can't even open a shop in Hamilton because of the support that Hamiltonians give to a chain like Tim Hortons. It would be good, I think, if more people had some money to be able to go out and... Maybe they would then go out and buy their breakfast there or buy their lunch there or do things like that if they had the money to actually spend on it.
Thank you. Through the chair, my reason for asking the question is I'm just trying to figure out how you're arriving at this, if you've spoken to some of the major stakeholders. But my next question is, have you considered the possibility of saying, "Slow it down"? $14 an hour within the next few months is a massive hike for a lot of these... This is what I'm told. The stakeholders are sharing with me. Would you consider an incremental increase, say, over two or three or four or five years, which is what they're doing in other states? And would you consider, the other thing was, a student rate? Because, again, the concern is, if you're paying someone $15 an hour, I'm not going to pay the student with less experience. But if I have an opportunity to have a lower rate, I would give a student the opportunity to gain experience. Through the chair.
Well, with regards to the incremental approach, we are supporting the legislation as it goes right now. You can imagine, it certainly may end up that way when the final bill comes forward, that they have changed the increment of how that's going to come forward. We certainly support the idea of getting up to as fast to a $15 minimum wage as possible. That being said, we understand the legislation is going to go up through a couple of increments. And if the legislation changes so that it would take an extra year or two to get there, we will probably support that as well, though we would be pushing for as fast as possible. The most reason we're pushing for that is because if you look at minimum wage buying power 25, 30, even 15 years ago versus minimum wage buying power today, what you used to be able to get for minimum wage used to be a heck of a lot more in terms of being able to have a life and pay your bills and do all of that stuff. So the actual buying power of minimum wage has sunk tremendously. And so is it a sudden step? Yes. I believe it's a necessary step. I believe many people who are working poor right now also believe that it's a necessary step, because for them to wait for an extra year or two years, it's going to be very, very tough for them to do that. I'm sure they will be happy to see that it's coming, even if it's a year later. That's something where we're certainly not going to be advocating for that change to come in, but if it came in, if it was a new part of the bill where they decided to make it more incremental, would we still support a bill that would ultimately get us towards $15 an hour? For sure we would.
Through the chair, have you spoken to members of the agricultural sector?
Again, they haven't reached out to us. A lot of the workers in the agricultural sector, as per the example I gave earlier, not necessarily unionised, and, in fact, a lot of migrant workers who come into the area, and oftentimes, they don't necessarily seek us out when they want to talk. I think perhaps there might be a concern that if they gave us that channel, we might try and unionise their workers.
Through the chair, again, my concern is that there's support for something, and the stakeholders haven't been engaged. And through the chair, I'm concerned that, you know, what has good intentions could very well have the opposite effect.
Well, the stakeholders have been engaged broadly at...
No, I'm speaking with you directly, though.
Yeah, certainly not as directly, but they've been engaged broadly because of chambers of commerce and business groups across the province. And I'm sure there's going to be several represented at the provincial committee meeting next week as well. So there has been broad representation. They certainly haven't necessarily spoken to us on the issue. I mean, our position has been clear from the start. We certainly have followed the OFL campaign, the 15 in fairness campaign. But we are happy to sit down with them at any point. We necessarily base our position on what our members want us to base our position on. So that's kind of where it's come forward from there.
Through the chair, so for clarification, this is driven through members purely?
Oh, driven through members and our relationship with the 15 in fairness, which is a grassroots worker membership.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, councillor. I'll take the chair back, and it's now councillor Green. Councillor Green.
And I actually have councillor Murray Pearson added to the list.
Whitehead, and Partridge, and Pearson.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I certainly appreciate the fact that Tim Hortons was brought up through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. To Anthony, are you aware that Tim Hortons owners, restaurant brands boasted $50 million quarterly profits last year? And I say that because, you know, when we have these conversations around living wage, to whomever is acting deputy mayor now, I guess it'd be councillor Whitehead? Are you dead? Correct. Okay. Through you, sir. You spoke a little bit about...
I was having a story, Donna.
You spoke a little bit about the impact on local economies, and there's a lot of myths that are... You know, we talked about myth-busting in the last one. There's a lot of myths about the minimum wage, and you spoke about particularly Seattle as this example, which came out with this dubious study, which was later broadly debunked. Can you talk about maybe, for instance, the total wages and employment for lower workers going up after these substantial increases? And just kind of drill down on what a local economy looks like versus when profits are shipped to an international multi-billion-dollar company, which is owned by an even bigger multi-billion-dollar company, 3G, which is the Brazilian brand that bought Tim Hortons. So I love the Tim Hortons example. Let's talk about that. Through you, Mr. Acting Chair.
It's one of those scenarios whereby, is it possible that some of those casual or part-time jobs will not remain at a Tim Hortons anymore? That's quite possible. But it also, there's a corollary to that, which is, some of the people that have those casual, part-time jobs might not need them anymore because the other jobs that they are doing, they are now getting paid a $15 an hour wage add. So when you don't have to have that second and third job, you might not need the extra 10 to 15 hours a week. And we might turn those part-time and casual jobs into more full-time-paying jobs. In other words, if I'm working 35 hours a week, 40 hours a week, and I'm getting $15 an hour, does that give me the time to now not take the extra job, go home and spend time with my family, go home and spend time taking care of my kids, do all of that stuff that I was never able to do in the past? I think, I mean, the transformational part of this and why... The part that I have the most trouble understanding is, I understand where the small-business fear is. The small-business fear comes from the fact that the model that we've known for so long is now going to change. And there are a lot of small businesses that do very well, but there are a lot of small businesses that are right on the cusp, and they say, you know, "Even a dollar change would impact me tremendously." That is a threatening... You never want to hear a small business that has a $1 minimum wage hike away from failing. You would hope that they have a bit more of a buffer than that. And my hope is that with a transformation like this, and with all of the people in the city that could be making more money and ready to spend it, I can tell you that when we consider going out and spending, our first choice isn't to go to the big-box store or the big chain. Our choice is to go to whoever is local, our local small businesses, and support them. And I think a lot more people would do that. That's the transformational part of this. It brings people out of... It doesn't only bring people out of the working poor. We talked about the crisis that we have in the city with regard to food banks, with regard to social services, how we are overusing them, how we don't have enough... There are certain times of the year where we don't have the resources to satisfy everybody who has the needs. Something like this is transformational because it happens... It doesn't just happen for union workers. It doesn't just happen for workers of one sector. It happens for everybody.
And I know through you, Mr. Acting Deputy Mayor, the fear and hysteria around this, and in particular, I'll go back to the example. I'm so glad that the previous speaker used... Sorry, Tim Hortons as an example, and spoke specifically about women. You talked about the vast majority of people being over 25. It's my understanding the vast majority of the minimum-wage workers are also women. Can you speak to the gender-based inequity in pay as it relates to women and low income?
Sure. So part of it is, women, newcomers... I'm reading from the stat here, which is on the back of the document. Women, newcomers, and racialised workers who face the systemic discrimination labor market are overrepresented with regards to minimum-wage jobs. Over 58% of minimum-wage workers are women. And the 35% of them are racialised workers, and the share of racialised employees earning minimum wage is 47% higher than of the total population. So that's on the information sheet that I provided. So there is a disproportionate amount of not only racialised workers but women who are at minimum wage. Now, could that be due to a number of factors? Could that be due to traditional family factors and childcare issues and the necessary responsibilities to take care of family, to take care of children? Sure, but that doesn't necessarily mean that as a part-time or casual worker, or in many cases, as we're seeing more and more in a lot of big cities now, a temp worker, that those jobs shouldn't be valued, and that if you're working a full-time job, you should be able to work one full-time job and be able to take care of your family. The reason why they call it living wage, and that's not exactly what this is, the reason why they call it living wage is because you can afford to live from it. So it does take into consideration, the more parameters that you put on this with regards to sector, with regards to type of business, with regards to which class you're talking about, the more parameters that you put on as to who gets the $15 minimum wage, if we just do it in this sector or this sector or this sector, it becomes less transformative. To just say, "Minimum wage," which is kind of our benchmark, bottom line for everybody in this province, "Minimum wage is this," that's how you enhance transformative, and that's how you start to bring, I say "start to bring" in a very minuscule way, start to bring some equity levels up and start to respect some of the diversity that we have in our community, and this community is getting more and more diverse every day.
Well, I know I often... I get nervous when people cite kind of Fraser Institute-type analysis from an economic perspective, knowing that so many very learned, high-level economists argue that the raise in the minimum wage has little or no impact on employment of middle-wage workers, even during times when the market dips. I mean, that's been well documented, I think, over 600 economists in the US, including Nobel Prize winners. I'm not sure if Fraser Institute has many of those, but nevertheless, it's very, very well documented. And so, you know, with that being said, it's pretty safe to say, "Mr. Deputy Mayor, automation is here. It's not going anywhere." Whether people are getting paid $11 an hour or $15, corporations will continue to automate jobs that can be automated, but for jobs that can't, like, you know, making food and childcare and other precarious work that is outside of automation, this is a necessary, I think, immoral feature of our society. So for that reason, at the appropriate time, I'm going to be moving that this council support and adopt this as a way to maybe perhaps revisit not the living wage conversation, but I think that all the benefits that we agreed on initially. Because lastly, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Anthony, just to give us maybe a broader international perspective, we're seeing California, we're seeing New York, like New York, you know, going in this direction. Is it pretty safe to say that there is a groundswell of popular support among workers, like, I don't understand the stakeholders' conversation, among residents and citizens internationally that is going to probably force this hand anyways?
I think that there has been a broad push over the last decade where studies have come up more and more, and the study that you referred to earlier out of the US was fairly substantial. When you have 600 economists signing on and basically saying that a $15 minimum wage has a stimulative effect on the economy and ultimately can transform an economy, that's a pretty strong statement from such a large group. This is something where a lot of people are moving towards this, and if they're not moving towards this, there are a lot of European countries where if they don't have a higher minimum wage or a $15 minimum wage, what they do have is a social net. We like to think our social net is the best in the world. Well, it's not the best in the world. It's better than our neighbours to the south in a lot of cases, but in Europe, the social net that they have in some of the countries there vastly exceeds what we have. And maybe you can afford to have a bit of a lower minimum wage if you have that kind of social net. This actually puts the purchasing power back in the hands of people. I also want to just make clear, and it may come up with a couple of other questions that come forward, this is important as well. I know you're going to see plastered across all of the documentation that I handed out and everything else, you see $15 in fairness, because that was kind of the tent pole aspect of this. I would ask people, please don't forget about the two dozen other workplace regulations that this changes with regards to precarious workers. I understand that $15 is going to be the red flag, positive and negative for a lot of people, or the green flag, I guess you could say, for positive. But there are so many other good things which this bill at least provides a baseline for with regards to protecting that precarious, the new group of workers who has to work this way. So as much as I appreciate the questions, I will certainly take any that you want to on the $15. I'd ask you to make sure that if you consider endorsing this, that you're not only considering it for the $15, consider it for all those other protections as well, because they are just as important.
And just in close for the record, we heard about the requests of all these people that you're supposed to consult with before you do this. Can you just maybe, just for those that might have missed it or might be listening in the anteroom, just explain what, who the stakeholders of the Hamilton District Labor Council are?
Yeah. So, I mean, currently, our current representation is about 50,000 unionised workers across the city. And one of the reasons why Labor took this on as a fight is because most of our workers aren't going to benefit by this, most of them, because we have contracts, and we are privileged enough that we have been able to negotiate contracts that have a lot of these protections. This is about the working class in general. And to say that we represent unionized workers doesn't mean that we aren't constantly in touch with worker groups and other community groups across the city and across the province. And this push has been going on for many, many years. We have 15 in fairness chapters in Hamilton who are not part of Labor Council, they are grassroots organizations. And those are the groups who are young workers, older workers, workers who've had to go back into the workforce, never thought they'd have to maybe, those are the workers who we also speak in favor of with regards to this legislation. We don't speak on their behalf, certainly, we only speak on behalf of Labor Council, but we speak hopefully in favor and in support of, with the working class in general.
Thank you, and I appreciate you taking that up for those that are unorganized and being here before us, and I will be at the appropriate time asking for council's endorsement of this bill.
Thank you. I want to ask, Tom Jackson, take the chair, and I have a few questions and comments, and I certainly appreciate you coming forward. So for clarification, University of Washington, not Fraser Institute, did a study, and it wasn't a shining study in Seattle. But when you read through it, I believe it's California, Berkeley, and others that looked at the empirical data that was relied on for the University of Washington study and debunked it clearly. So it seems that there's a lot more evidence supporting this movement than is against it, and the reports are coming forward that are being negative are being debunked solidly. And I just read the report from Berkeley, which was quite impressive. One thing they found for, on the business side, is turnover goes down, and performance, production goes up. No one talks about that around this table. But, so there are benefits for those businesses in respect to turnover, which is, you know, training somebody new and going through is a cost to small employers. When you have production going up because you've got a stable job with a livable wage, as you're getting production, your bottom line is going up. You've got reliable workers. So I clearly support the philosophy. The question I have for you is, though there's one element that, for example, cities don't have to, but we do, we hire summer employment. So these aren't workers necessarily going out to sustain a life, they're there to add dollars so they can continue the post-secondary education and so forth. We can afford that at the current rates. They don't fall in the category of the precarious worker because they're really a finite timeframe for the summer employment. Do you not believe that at least on the summer employment, we can hire more students to try and distribute the very little dollars that we have to as many people as possible through those summer months so they have something to go back to school with? Should they not be exempted?
Commentary, Anthony?
So I, I can give a personal reflection, I certainly can't reflect on the crafters of the bill, because the crafters of the bill seem to intend that the $15 was going to be across the board. My, if I was going to make an argument with regards to that kind of flat $15 statement, one of them would be that having less of those workers and being paid $15, I think ultimately is a better job for the people who are doing it instead of more weaker or tenuous jobs. In other words, somebody who gets a summer job, let's say, do they get that summer job at 40 hours a week? And if they get that summer job at 40 hours a week and they're making $10 or $11 minimum wage, because if they're a student, let's say, and they have to go back to school, do they then have to get another 15-hour or 20-hour job just to supplement what they need to go back to school at? If they were making that $15 minimum wage, does that mean that they now don't have to take that extra job and that extra job opens up? There is going to be a ripple effect that happens. We always strive for what we call good jobs, and you see that plastered across a lot of labor statements. We consider something that comes close to, and this doesn't quite meet living wage in Hamilton, the closer that you come to living wage makes it a good job. Even if it's a contract job, it makes it a good job, and if you were to work it for 40 hours a week, that would allow you to have the opportunity. You asked, would I be amenable to something like that? As I said earlier to one of the previous speakers, we are fighting for the $15 wage across the board, that's what we are asking for. If the bill gets amended along the way, might we still support that? We probably will still support whatever comes up. I can make reference to, people have been mentioning Seattle a couple of times now. One of the problems that actually happened in Seattle was they exempted, in order to get the $15 wage through, they had to exempt so many sectors from there in order to make it palatable. So if you're seeing cherry-picking of some of the weaknesses that have happened, if there have been some of the weaknesses in Seattle, it's because it wasn't across the board, it wasn't just a general minimum wage, it was a lot of sectors that were impacted and were exempted from the situation. I think if we start to exempt students, casual workers, part-time contract workers, that's when we get into a problem where you end up on a slippery slope. And so, do I support the idea of $15 across the board? Sure, I do. Might the bill come out in a slightly different form, and would I still support it then to get the end goal in mind? Sure, I might.
So the reason I ask the question, because I think it's important for those that this is the only career path they have, in respect to living in a community and having a quality of life, the $15 is it. My kids have worked all part-time, I mean, summer jobs in the city is very tough to get because it's oversubscribed for so many students in the city of Hamilton. And of course, we want to hire as many as we can with the budget we have. And we want to help as many of those families, and you know, sometimes a little bit is better than nothing at all. We will find ourselves in a situation that there'll be a lot less students getting dollars to help them through their university, because they're still being supplemented by their parents to some degree, or grants, or loans. And I guess my concern is that I support the premise of a long-term precarious jobs is not the way to go, and we need to tighten that up and provide a livable wage for all those individuals. But I could also see the other side, where for example, when I worked in the mine, we hired summer students. And again, they were paid a fairly good wage at the lower rate of the overall rate scheme in the mines, for example. But I can see that a lot of students in those automatic, okay, we're going to do something for our community, and we're going to hire X amount of students to help them in their community, I can see that narrowing to a lot less students getting, you know, these students that are getting work will get $15 an hour, and that'd be great for them, but a lot less students will have access to jobs through those summer months that had traditionally had jobs that did sustain them or helped them through the university period. So I guess I'm looking at summer employment specifically for students a little differently than the precarious part-time workers that are taking two or three jobs on just to sustain themselves. I see them as two different entities, and I want to ensure that we help as many people as practical. So I got this dilemma where I'm afraid that there could be less students are going to have access to revenue period in the summer months if they're built into this system. Do you have any concerns about that?
Any further commentary, Anthony?
My concerns aren't there because I think as an individual employer, might you see a reduction in numbers of the people you can hire? Yes. But as a city, when there is more money in the system, when there are more wages in the system that are being spent on the local economy, ultimately that is going to create jobs. And when you have that job creation, can a lot of them be summer and student jobs? Sure, because we know that it's not just the city who employs summer employees, it's a lot of businesses, and sometimes small businesses will bring in extra people for the summer depending on what specific service they provide. So I think on the grander scale, we're talking about job creation. For an individual employer, might it mean less people, but maybe for more hours? Because might an individual employer say, we were going to hire this person for 20 hours a week, but if we're going to be paying them $15 anyway, let's bring them in as a full-time employee, and maybe even give them a pathway to a future job, which when they come out of being a student, let's say, that they are going to be able to move forward in because now they've got that full-time experience? I think ultimately, in the grand scale of the economy, we're looking at job creation. For an individual employer, maybe less, but across the city, I think ultimately it's going to result in far more jobs.
So most of the jobs, whether it's for the city or sort of the mine that hired a bunch of students, they weren't 20 hours a week, they were 40-hour-a-week jobs for students, so it was scheduled and planned that way. You might find themselves working either, if it's $15, they want to help as many students, they might break it down to 20 hours a week so they can hire the same level of students, or they'll provide 40 hours, we could just reduce the amount of students, they get the benefit of having jobs with those organizations. So there will be an impact to families and our youth in those summer months if we lock in to that value. And the Labor Council's made very profound arguments on the precarious piece and livability, but now you're sort of creeping into that entry point for students to have dollars in their pocket when they go off to university or college. And it sort of concerns me because as a parent of children, I know it's highly competitive now to get a student just to get a job with any income. It might even get tougher unless you're right about more employment. So I'm not suggesting there's no merit to that, I just haven't seen anything that talks about, any studies that talk about what has happened to that student element in the summer months relative to this type of activity. And there is no studies on it, so I haven't found anything.
Well, so, there, sure, there are no, I mean, it is a new enough approach, the $15 movement, that it is, you're not going to find a ton of years-long studies out there. I will say this, though, for a student who is getting a summer job, even if they are, even if they are saving assiduously for tuition, let's say, we all know that our teens and young adults probably have, if they're still living at home, the most disposable income out of any group. We always talk about how every single marketing campaign is adjusted towards young adults and teens because of their ability to spend because of the lack of expenses. And I'm not talking about people who moved out of the house at this point, I'm talking about people who are generally still living at home. Though, that money is going to get spent. So if an employer could next year only hire 15 people instead of 20 people, that, those 15 people are going to be going out into the community and spending money. And they're going to be spending money either on whatever local establishments are around their house, and those are the people that are going to need, that will be hiring. And the nice thing about the way that it's done as a minimum wage is now it's not one sector versus another sector whereby the jobs in the mines for the summer, let's say, were being paid at a good rate, and the jobs in the service sector at a convenience store were being paid at minimum wage, so you're going to be losing money overall. Now even the person who gets employed at the convenience store is going to be paid $15 an hour. So it's not necessarily about what used to be a good-paying job versus a bad-paying job for students, it's just a job, and hopefully a good job for students. And I think that's ultimately where the balance is going to come out.
And I appreciate those comments, you understand, I want to help as many students as we practically can every summer in the city of Hamilton, and I wouldn't want to see that job market reduced as a result of this broad brush approach, or that's one segment that I need to better understand, but I certainly appreciate your explanation on it. The other area that you haven't talked about, but it's, what do I call, a strange ally to the labor movement or to workers, and that's called the Canadian Revenue Agency. I have, my wife is a controller for an IT company, and she sees lots of abuse where contracts, everyone's hired on a contract, you know, to avoid all the benefits and all those other kinds of things. CRA is coming in now and looking at these things and determining that if the contractor's only doing work for one employer, then in fact employee. So there's a lot of that is being corrected through the CRA, and I don't know if you've done any research or lobbying or anything with the CRA, but it appears that they are getting the job done.
We, most of what, most of the, let's say, CRA exemptions that we have been concerned about haven't necessarily been to do with workers, but more to do with at the large business level when we hear the tax write-offs. However, we realize that taxes pay for a lot of the social services that we have in our communities. So whether it's an individual income tax, or whether it's a business or corporate income tax, if people should be paying taxes, we want people to be paying taxes. And we understand that there are some contract jobs and some individual contractors that are going to find ways to write things off as expenses and try and not treat themselves as an employee. Another thing that this bill does as well is it brings more workers under the Employment Standards Act, because there are huge swaths of workers across the province who are not covered by the Employment Standards Act. And once you become covered by the act, then you become covered by a lot of the protections that this act also offers and the current Employment Standards Act offers. So that's one of the things that this will make. It deals with some sectors versus other sectors, sectors which have traditionally not been under the Employment Standards Act, and it's less than 50% of all workers in Ontario, I think, is the current stat, that are actually covered by the Employment Standards Act, which is pretty scary when you consider that it's supposed to be enacted which represents all workers. This seeks to bring more people under that envelope, which doesn't only concern wages, doesn't only concern job protections, it deals with health and safety issues as well, like the ability to go and deal with occupational health and safety and all of that stuff. So as far as, I mean, as far as labor is concerned, we know that taxes fund a lot of our social net, and we want people to have to pay the taxes that they should be paying. I don't necessarily want to get into a fine-point discussion about taxes, because I think they should be weighted in a different way, but maybe I'll do it at that.
Well, I just thought that it was interesting that they're going to a lot of, they're doing audits in a lot of companies, and they're finding that there's a lot of what we call precarious work because they're contracted employees, but they only have one employer, and Sierra's basically deemed them as employee of the company, and they've had to make those adjustments. So there's something happening that I wasn't even aware of, which is a positive step, actually, because it is creating employees versus the precarious contracted employees. I'm very supportive of all the principles, you know, most of the reports clearly indicate that in a society this day and age, I mean, if anyone watched the documentary on the Reaganomics, we saw that that philosophy was a dismal failure and probably the worst time for the United States of America in regards to inflationary rates and unemployment during the Reagan years. So clearly, the trickle effect doesn't work. You need to put money into the workers' hands, not just the wealthy hands. And the problem is that for long, far too long, the focus is being the other way, and this is about creating some equity in our system. So I will certainly support a motion coming forward. I had the one caveat, I have one concern, you have related some degree in regards to the economics of jobs being created that may offset those losses. I don't know if I'm totally convinced, but when you weigh it on the overall scheme of things, I'm very supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead. Thank you, Anthony. Chair, back to you, Madam Deputy Mayor, now that you're back in the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and next on the list is Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and Anthony, thank you once again for coming before us. Most of my questions have been answered, and I thank you for the fullness of your answers as well. The big concern that I had was the 60% of minimum wage earners over 25, and what about the 40% that are under 25? But I think we've had good discussion on that. Now, understanding that you're representing your members who support the current proposal, but if in the meetings, and you know, the public information sessions that are being held currently by the province, if the government was to tweak, what would you suggest would be the area they could focus on?
Oh, in terms of improvements?
In terms of tweaking to reduce the effect on the small businesses, and I'm going to speak a little bit about that in a minute, but you know, as I said, understanding, caveat being, that you're here supporting your members, and that your members support everything in the current proposal. And perhaps maybe you personally, what, if anything, could be tweaked to make it less onerous for small business owners?
Well, I'm certainly not going to pretend to speak for small business.
No, no, not asking.
Because I am a unionized employee at the school board right now, so that's far from being a small business. I don't know, the tweaks that we are largely going to advocate for, and we support the bill, as I said earlier, as a baseline, we still think that there can be improvements. And a lot of the improvements that Labor is going to speak to are going to be with regards to the Ontario Labor Relations Act, and specifically around union legislation and stuff like that. With regards to small business, I don't know that tweaks can come through legislation. I think there needs to be a re-shift in culture. The culture of, and I mean, I'm speaking in broad strokes here, so I hope you'll apologize, I apologize for that. The culture has been for the past 20 to 25 years. I grew up in this city ever since the day I was born, and I remember growing up initially on Province Street and then out near Stony Creek, and having small businesses around me that we would go to all the time. And the changing landscape, and I'm certainly not trying to paint them with a brush, of having the small businesses disappear and the big box stores take their places, which provide great jobs and great services and all of that stuff. It's now gotten to the point where it's very hard to even go to a small business and get some of the things that you need or some of the services you need because they're just not available, because they've been squeezed out of the market. This is going to have as much of an impact on big businesses as small businesses. So the big businesses that have for years been using their purchasing power to drive small businesses out, they're all going to have to pay $15 an hour as well, and that's going to cost them a whole bunch as well. Do they have more flexibility? Probably. I like to think that as Hamiltonians, and as the great job that I know council has done in endorsing and supporting some of our neighborhood efforts and some of our community efforts through the hubs and groups like that, you have a huge upswing right now in the city of people who want to shop locally, people who want to support local businesses. In this city, I'm seeing a huge turnaround of people who, if you could tell them within three to four blocks of their house, there was a local business where they could go to to provide this service, or provide, or I could buy things here or this, I think people would do that if they could afford to do that. I gave the example earlier- I gave the example earlier of the five-dollar t-shirt versus the ten-dollar, fifteen-dollar t-shirt. I think people are willing to do that. I know when I go out now, I always look for, if possible, union-made, Canadian-made. I know that's going to cost me two to three times what I'm going to be able to pay anywhere else, but I also look for local. If I can find a local shop where I can go and buy that, that's one of the first things that I look for. Now, I have a different filtering system than other people might, but I think most people, as they get to know the—the small business owners in their community, will want to support them, because having small businesses in your community isn't just something that we want, it's something we need. It's part of a vibrant community, to be able to walk out your front door down the block and see a whole bunch of opportunities available, instead of having to get in your car and drive six or seven kilometres. I think this—this city is ready to support small business, it's just a matter of having the purchasing power to do so.
And I appreciate that, especially unpacking a little bit more about the—the cultural shift that's—that's needed. Next Thursday, the province is coming to Hamilton. Can you just—for those who are interested in going in and having that discussion, or even just listening, where is it and what time, please?
We haven't been told yet. The last time they did a committee delegations like this, they did it over at the Sheraton.
Okay.
And usually they do it all day, like they'll start at nine in the morning and go till about five o'clock at night, and it's very similar to here, each speaker will have five minutes to speak and fifteen—up to 10 to 15 minutes of questions represented by all parties on the committee.
Right, and there was something in the local paper this morning that—that I did see, so I appreciate that. But I just very quickly, Madam Chair, you know, years ago, I had a small business, I had my own promotion and advertising agency, and—employed a fair number of people, and the government at that time had an incentive program, and it was that they would pick up two dollars per hour to hire someone and, you know, give them—give them the above minimum wage. And at the time, I—I thought about it quite a bit, talked to accountants, talked to different people, we decided to go for it. And that—for that year, I did receive that—that help, but I kept that person on, and she's still working to this day, and that was 20 years ago. And she was a single mom at the time, and she didn't have a lot of money, but, you know, I made the decision to—to invest in that, and yes, we did do very well, we weren't a struggling small business, but, you know, certainly, it did increase our productivity to have that person on. So, you know, I—I do agree, and what we did was—we did a culture shift on how we thought about doing business at the time. So I do agree with a lot of what you're saying. And in terms of shopping local, that is a huge push right now, you know, not just in Flamborough, but certainly in Flamborough, Waterdown, all of the communities are wanting to support their small businesses. So I think, you know, the time—the time is probably right to look at doing this, particularly over the next couple of years. So thank you very much, Anthony, and those are my comments, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Pearson.
My name is—
Mayor Eisenberger.
So thank you, Anthony, for your great presentation today, and I'm—I'm going to be brief on this one. I'm—I'm with Henry Ford on this one. You know, there's not much value in creating or mass-producing anything that your employees can't purchase. And I think that's a philosophy that was true back at the turn of the century, and it's true now, and I think this goes a long way towards rectifying that, so I—I fully support this. I—I—you know, I—I know it's open for debate, and, you know, there's different philosophies around that, but, you know, there's a—there's a level of discontent in the broader community, and I think people are concerned about precarious employment, and I think this is one way of—of dealing with that. And—and so I—I—I'm—not to get too deeply into the debate, I—I fully support this, I think we need to address these issues in terms of fair wages for people, and giving them an opportunity to actually, you know, create a living off of the wages that they're earning. And, you know, I would say fifteen dollars is hardly, you know, in—in—the grand scheme of things, based on kind of averages today, is—is hardly a living wage, it's barely a living wage, and, you know, that—we should be doing at least that. So I fully support this, and thanks for presenting this here today.
Thank you. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Anthony. Moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by councillor Pearson. To receive the report, all those in favor—
Carried.
Carried. Councillor Green.
A motion on the report? That the—it's moved by myself, seconded by councillor Marula, that the city of Hamilton endorsed Bill 148, Fair Workplaces and Better Jobs Act.
Madam Clerk, we can deal with that now? And up for discussion, is there any—Councillor Ferguson?
Yeah, I just have trouble dealing this on the fly, because we haven't seen a report from staff yet, what the cost implications are to us, particularly for students, involved students. We saw it was about a million dollars to go to a living wage. I'd like to know what it is. We just had a report, and I was in camera, so I can't quote it—the number, but at the Board of the Conservation Authority, and it was hundreds of thousands of dollars is the impact on the Conservation Authority budget. So until I know the impact to the city, I can't support it, because I need all that information in front of me to make an informed decision.
Thank you. Whitehead?
In principle, I certainly support what's being put forward. I think if you take a look at what's happening around us, and other experiments have taken place and failed miserably, this is a whole—a complete movement. I—you know, I indicated the Seattle, and I read a couple of reports on the Seattle situation, and you're flowing more money through your community, you're creating equitable jobs, you're higher performance, small employers have more sustained employees with—that are happier within the organisation. I did have the one reservation about the—the students, but I think I heard that there's a belief that more jobs we create with the—the flow-through—I'm not sure if that—it may make sense, I just don't know if that is reality, but when you weigh the overall —well, how you vision your community, and we already know the legislation, and this is really about the legislation, is already being consulted and being considered by the province of Ontario, and what's being asked of us is whether this council will support and endorse the legislation that deals with precarious employment. I think on principle, we all agree with that. So for those reasons, I wholeheartedly support the motion.
Thank you, councillor Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, and I remember going through this same debate when we were doing the fair wage, and I just want to ask a question through you, Deputy Mayor, to the—to Brian. Brian, do you recall what the impact was for the budget, just—to just for the fair living wage that we were debating during budget time?
Uh, no, through the chair I don't. I have a rough estimate of what the—of what this might cost us, but it might have been discussed in camera. I can give a rough range, if you'd like, of what this minimum wage would cost.
So you can give that now, or in camera?
I can give that in camera, if you'd like.
Okay, well, and as the previous speaker just said, absolutely philosophically, I am all for this. My concern is, what's going to happen at budget time? And when we've said we're going to endorse not only the—the minimum wage increasing now, but now much more for January, what impact is that going to have on our budget? So are we going to be sucking and blowing at the same time? So I just want to—I—I also would like feel more comfortable if I had that information. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Partridge.
Yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and I just—I have a question on process. So right now, we—we are dealing with delegates. We don't have a report in front of us that we're dealing with, but—I—and I'd like to hear the motion again, if I may, but I thought I heard that it was on the report.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councillor Green did say a motion on the report, but it was—I think he's just used to saying the phrase, it's actually just in response to the delegates, there is no report.
Okay, yeah, no, it's delegation, so there is no staff report that we can reference that has information. I'm uncomfortable with that as well, but I would like to hear the motion again, please.
Thank you for the question. The motion is that the city of Hamilton endorse Bill 148, Fair Workplaces, Better Jobs Act 2017, inclusive of all of the recommendations put forward in that.
And so thank you for that, I—I very much appreciate it, but, you know, similar to previous speakers, unless we know the impact of what that's going to be on the city as a whole, because it is all of the current proposal changes coming forward, we only know from our in-camera discussion about the impact of the wage increase, but there's a lot of other components that—moving components, if you will, to the current proposal, which we have absolutely no idea what that impact's going to be. And so I'm wondering if, you know, perhaps you want to rephrase that, to be referred to staff, to have some direction attached to it? You know, I think philosophically, I do support a lot of it, but we really need to have a fulsome report back on what the—the implications are going to be, and so without that, I can't support it at this time. Thank you.
Councillor Farr. So—sorry, councillor Green, have you—
Through you, Chair.
Before—I—before you do, I apologize. Councillor Green, you haven't really spoken to it, you're on the list before councillor Farr. Do you want to wait until after the speakers, or do you want to speak now?
I—I get a sense—thank you for that discretion, Madam Deputy Mayor. I get a sense it probably makes sense for me to wait and listen to the questions, and then answer them as fully as I can when they're done.
Thank you, councillor Farr, followed by councillor Marula.
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm ready to join the fight for fifteen in fairness, and all the great comments and questions are much appreciated, and help me maintain my support for this, and certainly I can recall—it's probably about five years ago, we had a McMaster professor up there who spoke as eloquently to the same subject as our friend Anthony, but my question through you to Brian is, remind me, Brian, why we would—if you have a number, why we would need to go in camera to get that number, or why we have debated in the past in camera what that number is if we join the fight for fifteen in fairness?
So, sorry, through the chair, I'm just going to find that email again. So, I guess—it's—sorry, through the chair. So I guess the question—first question is, is whether we should be going in camera to have this discussion, or whether I can just give the answer with a rough range of what that number might be, that might affect us? I think I can give the—the rough range.
Yeah, sure, and I—I—I don't see why—I think now is a great opportunity to get that outside of in-camera. So through you to Chair, what is your approximation, Brian?
Um, so through the chair, I would say it's—we have a rough estimate of it being around $600,000.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Green.
Thank you very much, and I'm certainly will remember this whole debate around the living wage, and proposals to phase it in, and having a very vigorous discussion about that around budget time, recognizing that at that time, it was voluntary and in our discretion to be on what I would consider the right side of history. Now what's before us is a bill that was introduced—I think the first reading was June 1st, it has now gone through a series of considerations for the Standing Committee in Finance and Economic Affairs. That's where it is right now, actually, July 10th, 2017. So this is time-sensitive. We—we will either kick it off to staff, Madam Deputy Mayor, and have it come back after they've kind of made their decision, at which time it will be too late anyways. I—I see this as being somewhat of an inevitability in—in the upcoming months, that we're going to go in this direction. And, you know, as a corporation, just looking at how the—the minimum wage feature is going to have an impact on us—I mean, I—I stood firmly by that during budget time at 1585, but I think what's important in what—what Mr. Marko brought to the table today are all the other labour reforms that are very important and contained within this. One of the things that I don't think was brought up or mentioned, or is even covered in this legislation, as we heard, concerns for the agricultural sector, is its overreliance, and I would say exploitation of temporary foreign workers, and it's not even covered off in this bill. So the agricultural sector in that regard is out. It'd be my preference to see us have a—a—a more clear and candid conversation around the use of temporary foreign workers in the Canadian economy, to provide full rights and and accordances, and kind of equal pay and consideration, and healthcare and protection to temporary foreign workers as we do Canadian workers, but that's not what's before us today. What's before us today is a bill that is—is being considered right now. We had the opportunity to endorse the bill, and we have an opportunity in that space to kind of revisit something that we debated at length at, and I think the numbers through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, were on the living wage numbers at 1585, and so probably not—there's probably even less than the $600,000 at the fifteen-dollar rate.
Sorry, through the chair, that's the fifteen-dollar range.
Oh, that is the fifteen-dollar rate, okay. And, you know, that's—a again, for me, as a—as a corporation employing in government, I believe that we have a moral duty, knowing what we know, to provide people, regardless of their age, regardless of the fact whether they're seniors who have been pushed out of the workforce into this precarious retail sector jobs, like at Tim Hortons, or our Crossing Guards, or others, or students saving. This idea that everybody's coming from a family that can afford to pay their children's tuition is just not the reality. The reality is, a lot of kids that are working are—are doing it just to save a fraction of what their actual costs are, and—and I think the unfairness of it is that we have a generation of people who nostalgically reflect back at a time in education when you can walk down and get a job at our—at our waterfront with Stelco and DeFasco, and make your tuition, your room, your board, and your books, all in three months. That's done. That just doesn't exist anymore. And so the debt load that we're passing on to future generations by suppressing workers' wages, while the cost of everything goes up, is unconscionable. It's actually immoral. It's—it's—it's—it's a—I think, a—a burden that we're putting on a younger generation that will be more precarious, not because of immigration or anything else, but perhaps automation, perhaps shifts in the economy, that we have an opportunity right now to right. So with that being said, we recognize this is a symbolic motion. We recognize that it's going to come down one way or another, regardless of where I think we, as a—as a city, support, endorse, or reject. And I'm comfortable now to just go ahead and—to move the motion, and if folks are not comfortable, they reserve the right to not support this at this particular time, that's always their democratic right. For me, just like I did during budget time, it's before us today, not just the wages, but the whole package. If folks want to break out the wages and endorse all the other labour stuff, I'm amenable to that, just to kind of get some people onside for the labour reforms which are long overdue, Madam Deputy Mayor, but I'm not going to kick the can to have a staff report come back in October while the legislature makes a decision in September. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris, did you want to speak to—did you? No? Okay, all right. You—you were second time, hang on. Could you take the chair first, councillor? My concern about voting on this now, councillor, is that we have only spoken to representatives of the union, we have not spoken to another stakeholder, we haven't had a presentation from anybody who will be impacted by this, and yet as a city, we would be making decisions to support a piece of legislation that will have a profound impact on small business, large business, as I said, and on the agricultural sector, without once having spoken to a delegate or a representative from those stakeholders. So for that reason alone, and my concern about the impact through studies that have been presented, and the fact that it is such a huge leap to $14 in January, and then 15 with very—well, with no incremental steps, and no student wage, I'm very concerned about that, but most importantly, I'm—I'm concerned and—and actually hesitant to support anything without speaking to all of the stakeholders. For that reason, I can't support your—your motion. I'll take the chair back. Councillor Whitehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm trying to find if there's a—a—a another way that we could hopefully get more support around the motion. I think what we all, I believe, agree with is the principles that are being espoused by the proposed legislation. The reason why they're out consulting is that—that we haven't seen the final draft of the legislation, so you might want to—some may want to reserve their judgment till we actually see what the impacts are of the final—final legislative piece. So we're in this consultation process, so I would ask the—the mover, and I—I would still support the—the the motion as put, but if we want to do some wordsmithing and —and—and—and say that this council supports the principles and the objectives espoused by the proposed legislation, would he entertain that? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marula, for the first time.
Question I was asking of the mover.
I—I would—I would be willing to—to get a clearer sense on the timing, and—and perhaps understanding when this final draft will be put forward before legislation. I'm not opposed to having other folks come in and delegate and have a full conversation like we did with living wage, certainly not afraid of that conversation. So, you know, when is the next GIC after this?
Madam Deputy Mayor, the next GIC would be August.
And I don't think—it—it—when does the legislature—it's not even—
So August.
Okay. Okay, I'm—I'm happy to wait until August, if that satisfies some folks, and—I'm—okay, thank you. Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm happy to wait until August, or at a time that might be providing more opportunity for input, and—and not vote on it today.
Thank you. Are you withdrawing, or tabling, or just—Marula, would you like to speak to this?
I—I—I'm making no—no motion on the motion, at the motion.
So you're withdrawing the— So, you're withdrawing the motion?
No, I'm allowing people to speak before I get a better sense.
Counselor Marula.
Motion has been presented. I think what Counselor Green is stating, which I concur with, it's not time sensitive. So, if we could just add an amendment, that staff report back, because I'm hearing that all that most people are asking for is a report. So, if we can just amend it by adding a B to it, the staff report back accordingly to the next GIC prior to September, I think that would accommodate everyone's needs and just can move forward.
Thank you, Counselor, Madam Clerk.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm not sure if staff would actually even have time to review the legislation and report back in time for the August meeting. The deadlines are fast approaching. So, if it's not going to October, you may want to at least give them to September. And they're actually considering the bill again today.
So, I guess the thrust of what I'm trying to state is that it becomes time sensitive only if it's about to receive royal assent. I don't think we're nowhere near at that point. So, our input needs to be provided prior to that moment. So, whenever that time is, we leave it up to staff to follow up accordingly so that it synchronizes to that effect.
Thank you. Counselor Ferguson, for the first time.
Yeah, if you'd like, there's those speakers, you can go back to me. I'd like to move a motion.
Have you spoken to this already?
No.
No? Not to this?
But I just did that. I just... Oh, I did speak to the issue about the cost, yes.
Okay, I apologize. Counselor Partridge.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate everyone's consideration around this, around this motion. Again, I just, you know, I want to restate, I just think it is so hugely important that we know the other implications and what that will mean to our budget. We didn't support it through our 2017 budget. We booted it to '28, I guess, for consideration. It's my recommendation, or my memory serves me right. So, you know, I think we're hard pressed to now jump on the bandwagon to support it when we really don't know, other than the minimum wage costs, what are the other cost implications when we look at all of the components of this legislation? Because there are at least 20 other changes that will impact and add costs. All I want to know is just, we need to have those costs in front of us before we debate the issue and consider voting. That's it.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, so, is it appropriate that I put a referral motion?
Madam Deputy Mayor, yes, it is appropriate if you would like to refer the motion that's on the floor. Is that what you're... But just for clarification, I am on the website. They've only had the first reading and it was referred to a standing committee, so it's not close to the second reading. Right now, it's at a second...
It's not time sensitive.
To a standing committee, so it's not even close to a second reading yet.
So, what would be an appropriate date then to include in my motion?
September?
September GIC?
I didn't hear what you're referring, you're referring...
Well, I'm going to ask for the cost.
So, you're referring, you're asking to refer Counselor Green's motion to the September?
Okay.
If, I'm asking you, is that what you would like to do?
Well, I didn't hear the date, the trigger date. I couldn't hear you.
There is no trigger date.
Right now, there is no trigger date. It's been referred, it's had its first reading and it's been referred to a standing committee. So, it'd be similar to here where it's...
I think I heard Counselor Marula suggested September. So, I'd like to move this, it should be referred to staff to report back to the September GIC on the cost implications to the city, including all the boards and agencies that we fund, including Conservation Authority, Library Board, and on and on and on, so that we understand what we're agreeing to before we move forward.
Counselor Ferguson, if I may, may I just ask staff, is that enough time?
So, through the chair, we'll report back with the best information that we can at that time.
Okay.
Through Madam Chair and Brian, it sounds like you already have the cities. I know the Conservation Authority has theirs. I don't know about the Library Board and all the other boards and agencies, but it'd be pretty easy for them to calculate, I would expect. Thank you.
Through, if I may, if I may, Counselor first. Counselor Ferguson, you mentioned the costs associated. Do you want the entire, there are also implications in terms of contractual obligations as well. The full impact, is it possible to say the full impact? Thank you. Counselor Whitehead.
Can I also ask if there's, we have this time period that we would entertain delegations or submissions to this council in this regard for consideration when that report comes back?
Madam Deputy Mayor, delegations are always entertained if there's a, definitely if there's a report. It is up to committee, of course, but I've never seen the committee not agree if there's a report on the agenda.
Yeah, but I'm actually going one step further in saying that we, in considering this important matter in regards to the support of this legislation, that any stakeholders or any community that wish to comment or provide a submission for consideration, we invite them to do so. I want to make that as part of the direction.
Absolutely.
Counselor, to clarify, are you asking staff to reach out to them or simply to make it aware that the...
Oh, I don't know what the vehicle is, but I think that the thrust is that we are, now have a motion that we will be considering in September with impacts coming back from staff. But I'm also suggesting that we, knowing we have that timeframe, it gives plenty of opportunity for the community, from all stakeholders, if they have an interest in this particular topic, to whatever mechanism we use, to invite them to come forward with written submissions or delegations for September.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, the Clerk's office would not invite a delegation. It's usually done through councillors' offices when they see the agenda online. I'm sure that if Anthony is still here or will see this, and the media would make people aware as well. Unless there's a specific list invited, to invite. If you have a specific list, we could certainly advise them, but otherwise, we typically do not send out invitations.
Well, I think I just did. Thank you.
Thank you. On the motion on the floor by Counselor Ferguson, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Moved by Counselor Ferguson, seconded by Counselor Partridge. All those in favor? Carried. We're not dealing with Counselor... Anyone opposed, Counselor, or sorry, Mayor Eisenberger's opposed. So, you wanted to vote on it today? Okay. Counselor Green, are you opposed or you...
No, I'm in favor of it. We can have the full debate.
Thank you. So, your motion was withdrawn and this motion is replacing your motion? No? It's referred. Okay. Are we moving on to item 6.4? With Matthew Jackson and Jeremy Getson of Union Gas, please come forward to speak to item 7.1. Madam Johnson. Oh, on the speaker list, okay.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the committee. I wanted to start off this morning by thanking you for giving us time on the agenda this morning to talk to you about a proposal that we've been working on to expand natural gas service to Sheffield. Before I jump into the presentation, I did want to acknowledge the work that Counselor Partridge and her office have done to help sort of, help us shepherd this through the planning department. So, thank you for that. Certainly, it was appreciated and it's been a bit of a timely matter because of the timelines put on the program by the province. So, just quickly, probably most of you in the room know us, we're Union Gas. We are the second largest natural gas utility in Ontario. We're the natural gas provider in Hamilton. We have 1.4 million customers across Ontario and we operate about 65,000 kilometers of pipelines throughout the provinces and the communities we serve. We have 2,300 employees that live and work in the very communities that we serve. And we are proud of the fact that we are the second largest in the province and that we have the lowest rates in Ontario currently for natural gas service. So, why are we here today? We hear a lot of talk in Ontario, probably no surprise to anyone in the room, around the rising costs of electricity in Ontario. And expanding natural gas to more communities in Ontario helps drive local economic growth. It helps create jobs, it helps lower energy costs for families and businesses, and it helps the economies grow in those communities. Natural gas continues to be the lowest cost and most reliable form of energy in Ontario, and it's also a clean energy solution when compared to other dirtier forms of local home energy. As I mentioned earlier, Union Gas rates are regulated by the Ontario Energy Board, so they are very consistent, and we are currently the lowest cost provider in Ontario. When you compare natural gas to other forms of energy in communities such as propane or home heating oil, there is also a reduction in carbon emissions by switching to the cleaner burning fuel. So, this chart here shows really the value proposition of natural gas and what's been driving the dialogue in Ontario about increasing gas service to more rural parts of the province. The line on the bottom there is the natural gas rates in Ontario for the average home to heat their home in hot water for a year. So, you'll see that line over the last 10 years has been on a downward trend or a very consistent trend with a cost spread between other forms of fuel anywhere from $1,000 to $2,500 a year. So, that's money that can go back into the pockets of families and businesses, and that's really what's been driving the interest for expanded natural gas in Ontario. So, the question I most often get when I'm talking to council members such as yourselves is, how come there's not natural gas pipelines on every road like there is electricity or cable or internet? The reality is, we're operated and regulated by the Ontario Energy Board, and we operate under a very different regulatory framework from other utilities. And currently in Ontario, the regulatory framework prevents us from cross-subsidizing at all between any of our existing customers. And it's a different economic model from that employed by other utilities. So, the very fundamental regulatory framework that we operate in creates challenges, and the government's recently gone through a proposal and a process to help loosen those regulatory barriers, and that's what we're here today to talk about. So, the province did recently announce a $100 million natural gas grant program. So, they've done two things. They've gone through a regulatory review to create some flexibilities in how we fund and finance rural expansion of natural gas. And they've also come up with a $100 million fund for rural, remote, and First Nation expansion. So, that is a $30 million fund for economic development initiatives and a $70 million fund for community expansion such as that that we're looking at in Sheffield. The good news for council today is, I'm also a councillor at home myself, and the thing I love the most about these kinds of presentations is we get to do all the work. We do all the paperwork and submit the applications. All I need from you is a resolution of support from the city at this time. So, it's a fairly easy process for the municipalities right now to partner with us on these applications, and it's for the capital shortfall associated with these projects. So, what would it look like for the residents of Sheffield? So, in order to qualify for provincial funding to fill the capital shortfall, the government set a number of parameters, the first being that new customers coming on the system need to make a contribution to the project. So, these customers coming on the system will pay a volumetric surcharge on their bill over and above what a typical Union Gas customer would pay currently. So, that would work out to be about 23, or will be, 23 cents per cubic meter. So, the more you use, the more you pay, the less you use, the less you pay. For an average customer, that's the equivalent of about $500 a year in addition to what a typical natural gas customer would pay on the system already. When you compare that to the savings, that still leaves new customers coming on saving anywhere between $1,000 and $1,500. So, we've tested the market, we've done a significant amount of research. That volumetric charge seems to be the sweet spot where customers will still come on the system and recognize savings enough that there's a substantial amount of money left in their pocket at the end of the year. That volumetric charge will be in place for 40 years. So, that volumetric charge will be locked in today and it will be the same rate throughout the term of that timeframe. In order to qualify for provincial funding from the program, the municipalities that we're applying for must agree to make a contribution to the project equal to the incremental increase in property taxes. So, there's no net financial impact on the municipality. If we are successful in getting the grant money, we would continue to pay the property taxes on the new pipes. So, for every meter of pipe Union Gas has in the municipality, we pay property taxes on those pipes. We're unique in the utility sector. We are the only utility type that pay property taxes for the use of the right-of-way. So, it's basically an in and an out. The province says municipalities have to contribute, but it's equal to the increase in property taxes. So, for Sheffield, it's approximately $5,000 a year in revenue that the municipality would basically defer for the first 10 years. After that 10-year period, that is new revenue for the City of Hamilton in perpetuity for the life of that asset. So, it's really the, I think, the province's way of trying to show that the municipalities are making a contribution, but they are recognizing that it's not a net negative on your finances. So, when we add up the volumetric surcharge, the municipal contribution, there's still a capital shortfall on these projects, and that's where the provincial government will come in and provide funding. In terms of providing service to the residents in Sheffield, we're looking at probably 2019 at the earliest, pending regulatory approval and provincial government approval for the grant. I did think it was worth pointing out, I always like to talk about the taxes we currently pay. Currently, in 2016, Union Gas paid to the City of Hamilton just over $6.5 million in property taxes. That, about 95% of that is related to the pipes in the ground. So, I always say we're the best kind of taxpayers to have because we don't call when the snow isn't shoveled and we don't call when the garbage doesn't get picked up. So, we really appreciate that partnership with the city and always like to point that out. This map here just gives you a high-level sort of overview of the area we're looking to provide service to if we are successful in getting the grant funding. I will note the asterisk, these are preliminary designs and they will evolve as we move towards filing a leave-to-construct application with the Energy Board if we are successful. That gives you a general sense of the area we're looking to serve. So, basically, our commitment to the City of Hamilton and the residents of Sheffield is to provide, to prepare the application and submit it to the provincial government's program with all the relevant data required. And if successful in receiving the grant funding, we will then move expeditiously to file a leave-to-construct application with the board. What we need from the City of Hamilton in order to move forward with the application to the provincial program is a demonstration of support for the project via a municipal resolution. And that resolution basically just has to acknowledge that it is a priority for the city and then that there would be a commitment in that resolution that if we are successful, the municipality would contribute that 10 years of property tax revenue back to the project. I will note, with today's resolution, you'll just be, or with the resolution that will be hopefully passing, it's only a commitment to the sort of philosophy. If we are successful, we'll be coming back with a formalized agreement with all the data and all the numbers and everything reconciled so that you have satisfaction that it's the right numbers. So, just in terms of timelines, so we're in the first bubble today. The application window was very short for this program. It was only 90 days, so we have to have them submitted by July 31st. If we are successful in getting the grant approval, we will know hopefully by September from the provincial government. Following that, we'll apply to the Ontario Energy Board late this year, once we know which projects were successful. And then after that, the money would flow from the provincial government and the projects would be built. So, we're looking at a couple of years out, probably still, but all projects do have to be complete by March 1st, 2021. So, just to summarize and to wrap up, Union Gas is very much excited about the opportunity to partner with the city to apply for this grant for the residents of Sheffield. We are working towards a fast approaching deadline of July 31st. And our ask of the city council is for a demonstration of support for this application to the provincial government through the way of the resolution that was provided and that contribution commitment of the 10-year property tax commitment, which is, like I said, basically revenue neutral for the city in the first 10 years, and then you would benefit from that revenue after the 10-year period. So, with that, I know that's a lot of information in a hurry. I appreciate your time on your agenda today, and I look forward to any questions you might have.
Thank you. And Counselor Johnson?
Actually, I'd like to relinquish to Counselor Partridge and I'll be the next speaker.
Counselor Partridge?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Counselor Johnson. I very much appreciate that. So, welcome. And we had our conversations on the phone back in, I think it was late May or mid-May, understanding that the timelines were incredibly tight. I don't see anyone for finance in the room right now, but if they can hear my voice, I may have some questions if they'd like to make their way back. My questions are for you at this point. Why Sheffield?
So, good question. So, there's a few factors that have gone into how we've identified these communities. We are working on preparing approximately 40 applications for communities across Ontario. Predominantly what drives the sort of communities that we've selected is local interest. So, we've had a number of inquiries. So, typically, you know, if we get asked the question, how do I get connected to natural gas? They typically either go online or call into our call center, and we track and monitor that data. There was a significant cluster of customers that had phoned over the last number of years to inquire in that area. We've had discussions with local agricultural facilities, local communities, and there was really a sort of collective sort of group of people that were interested that drove us to sort of put the lens on and identify that there was probably a feasible project if we were successful into the program. We have done polling of the communities recently as well, over the last couple of weeks. We don't have the final data back, but I can tell you there was overwhelming, overwhelming majority of support of the residents we polled said that they would convert within the first number of years.
Thank you for that. I was curious because, I mean, certainly right across Flambrow, I can't speak for other words, but right across Flambrow, there's been inquiries... right across Flambrow, there's been inquiries made about, you know, hooking up to natural gas and getting the infrastructure there, and so I'm pleased to hear that, in your opinion, would it be the majority of the Sheffield residents that are wanting to have the gas infrastructure built?
So from the polling we've done, not just in Sheffield but across Ontario, we do have the sort of high-level stats back, there's a vast majority, far over 50% of people that were polled said that they would convert in the first couple of years. And I do understand that there's been some discussions, and I think we're planning on coming to the Agricultural Committee in September to talk about the challenges of expanding into rural Ontario and how we might be able to work together over the next number of years to see if there's any potential for growth outside of Sheffield as well.
And I appreciate that. I'll certainly make sure to attend the Ag and Rural meeting in September. The public meeting, so you have not actually had a public meeting, you've done public outreach, because one of the things that I would certainly want to have is a public meeting with yourselves presenting and, you know, sit there to answer some questions, just to really allow the residents locally to ask those questions. You know, I think it's great that the majority are in support of it, but when could we look to do that?
Another good question, so through the chair. So our first priority right now is meeting that July 31st deadline. So we're working towards that feverishly, and then if we were successful in getting provincial funding for this project, absolutely, we would be in the communities. Typically, what we do is, once a project's been developed, we'll typically come out and meet with the community, do a bit of an open house, and sort of allow people to ask questions, and then once we have approval from the board, and we're sort of moving forward with construction and trying to get people connected, we often come back and do a second round of open houses so that people can get their questions answered and sort of understand that path of from where we are today to how do I get the meter attached to my house and my furnace converted. So absolutely, once we have a decision from the province as to whether or not we receive the funding, we'll be out there at least once, if not twice, for public meetings.
And so when would that be? Because again, I'm pretty certain that I heard you say there would be, there's a deadline to get the application in, and I would assume that there will be a deadline to announce who's getting the grants.
So it'll be somewhat up the will of the provincial government, we're hoping, from what we're hearing, September, October timeline, we'll know whether or not the project was successful.
All right, that's terrific, that would be great. Now, we do have a report that we're dealing with a little later in here, and, you know, one of the things that it does identify, well, there's a number of things, but I won't address those now, but one of the important things was the financial piece was not available for staff when they wrote the report. And I understand timelines were incredibly tight at the time, and so, you know, whether staff feel they have a more fulsome report for us to actually do anything more than endorse, but this 5,000 that you've come up with, which is over 5,000 per year for 10 years, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
All right, and so why wasn't that available for staff at the time of the report?
So that number, so we've had a team of people that have been working sort of feverishly around the clock.
Right, I understand.
As I understand it, through discussions that have subsequently happened, so there's been a number of sort of back-and-forth communications with staff. As I understand it, staff are going to be reporting back, there was, they were connected with our property tax department, we worked out the details, provided the information as it was becoming available, and it's my understanding that staff's recommendation will be that council consider supporting the resolution as was originally provided, because we've given them the assurance and the confidence that it is sort of an in and an out. It was a bit of a, you know, we had a high-level sort of idea of the project in Sheffield, we've now gone through and done a more detailed design, so we have closer to what the reality is in terms of the number of meters of pipe and where we'll be serving. So we've got that data and that information now, and I think that was helpful in assuring council that it was basically an in and an out for the city, and that it is a requirement from the provincial program. It's, you know, when you look at the overall capital costs, that Union Gas will be investing in these, the municipal portion is small in comparison to the overall cost. I know when you're talking to municipal dollars, every dollar counts, but it's a way, I think, of the province just making sure that the councils are committed, and that is a priority for them, recognizing that hopefully, that it's not a negative impact on the municipal budget. And really, it's revenue you don't have now because the pipe's not there, but after that 10-year period, it will be new revenue in perpetuity for the city.
No, and I do appreciate that, you know, having, knowing what the requirement is for the application from the province, I was a little bit concerned that we wouldn't be able to provide that, but what I'm hearing from you is that staff now have that information on the financial aspect of it?
Yeah.
And they'll be reporting back at the time of the, at the time when they do the report, and I understand Alvin is going to be up next doing that presentation, and will be able to answer my questions. So, and I guess the other question I have for you is, there's a number of areas throughout Flambrow that have been asking, particularly on the concessions, you know, residents have been asking for expansion of the Union Gas infrastructure down those concessions. Were any of those considered?
So I will take a quick stab at that, and then I'll turn it over to my colleague, Jeremy. What I can tell you is there's been a number of factors gone into the development of these projects, and we are developing them at a high level, whether it's in Sheffield or any other community, that we look for those agricultural facilities or local businesses through sort of driving the communities and getting it out in the field. So yes, and just at a high level, so these projects, if we are successful in moving it forward, there is opportunity to expand off of these projects to serve people, so just because they're not on the green map now.
Right.
Doesn't mean the window of opportunities closed. I don't know, Jeremy, if you want to talk to the local area a little bit more specifically.
Well, I suspect that density, geographic density would play a role in this, certainly, in the selection.
Yes, most projects fail because of lack of support from local residents and the lack of density in the area, and the capital contribution upfront is generally too high to proceed. So Sheffield was good because it was only 2 kilometers from the nearest gas main, and it has relatively good density as well.
So my final question, unless I think of another one, is the cost to the residents. So you're going to put the infrastructure in, there's going to be construction, do they then have to pay a fee to hook up to your infrastructure?
So through the chair, no, so there's no, so I should preface that. The typical customer coming on the system, there's no upfront capital contribution for them. So if they're within 30 meters, right, 30 meters, 30 meters from the main, which most residents are, it's included in their rate, so there's no cost to connect. If you happen to have a country home that's located 200 meters from the main, you're going to have to pay a capital contribution over that 30 meters that's included in the rates, and that's approximately $40 a meter. The majority of people, though, will not have to pay any fee to Union Gas to attach to the system. They will have to deal with an HVAC contractor to convert their appliances and whatnot in the home, but in terms of joining up to the system as a Union Gas customer, no, there shouldn't typically be a capital contribution.
So as long as they're within that 30 meters, their home that needs to be hooked up, so Union Gas will pay up to 30 meters onto their property, property resident then would pay over and above if that was necessary to hook up to the home, and then, of course, whatever infrastructure they need within their own home.
Yep.
And thank you for clarifying that, because I know typically you go to the end of the property, and then the homeowner pays for the hookup from the house to the road, but what you're saying is you will be, Union Gas will be paying for that up to 30 meters off the roadside into their property?
That's right, yes. We're a bit unique in that sense, but yeah, we do, in any area that we serve, that's our approach.
Okay, and will that infrastructure that's being built, that 30 meters that you've allowed for, will there be incremental costs on monthly bills, gas bills, over a period of time to pay for that infrastructure?
So the only incremental part of the bill will be that volumetric charge we talked about, so that 23 cents per cubic meter.
Right.
That will be on the bill for a period of 40 years, so they will pay, these communities will pay a little bit more than what people on our systems in already serviced communities are, and that decision comes from an Energy Board decision back in late 2016 that basically set some principles. It said that you can't cross-subsidize, so there was a discussion about whether or not we should be able to cross-subsidize to get more people on. They said absolutely that was not going to be allowed.
And that's the Ontario Energy Board?
The Ontario Energy Board, correct, they're our regulator. And they also came back and clearly said that new customers, much like the growth pays for growth philosophy that we employ at council tables, that new customers, so the development should pay for development, new customers must contribute something. And that 23 cents per cubic meter is a result of a significant amount of market research that we've done, also looking at the economics to make sure that customers are going to save enough to make it worthwhile. We wouldn't be doing this if they were not going to be ahead, but we figure that they can save anywhere between 1,000 and $1,500 a year even with that volumetric charge. So there's still a good economic reason to make the switch.
Okay, and thank you, Matthew and Jeremy, I appreciate that, and I guess my final question is, if a homeowner on the route decides not to hook up, then what?
Unlike with other sorts of systems, like water, let's say, where we could potentially be forced onto the system, this is a volumetric, or sorry, a voluntary conversion. So if a homeowner makes a decision for whatever reason that they don't want to convert to natural gas, that's completely within their choice, and there'd be no impact. So we don't anticipate that 100% of people in the communities are going to come on. We have sort of a high-level analysis, estimates of what we believe will convert, but there's no cost to residents unless they decide to switch over their energy use.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I do appreciate the presentation and the answers to your questions. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor, councillor Johnson.
Yep, thank you, and through you to Matthew, first of all, thank you for our phone call, that was wonderful. Alvin was actually at our last Ag and Rural affairs and was presenting on your behalf, and I believe that you couldn't make it at the last minute, and it was, it was really, it was sad actually, because we had a few people at the table that were saying, why this town, not my town? So we're really looking forward to seeing you in September and getting some of those questions clarified, because Alvin just sat there and went, it's not the City of Hamilton. So it was, it was very, very interesting. Councillor Partridge did ask all the questions that I was going to ask, and again, thank you for being so responsive when we asked for you to come, that's just wonderful. So I know you're on the docket, and we'll probably be seeing Alvin there at the same time, but my understanding, just one question, you're basically not asking the city for any money at this point in time, correct?
So through the chair, basically what we're looking for is a resolution that acknowledges that if we are successful, the city will contribute. So we're looking for you to support, I guess, the principles set out in the grant application guidelines. So the grant has laid out a number of boxes that Union Gas has to tick from the municipalities that we're applying in partnership with. The grant has to be, one, an acknowledgement that rural expansion of natural gas is a priority, and two, that if the application is successful, that the municipality is willing to make that contribution for the 10-year period equal to the property taxes. So what will happen is, let's say we get a resolution passed from the city in support, we'll attach that to the application. Fast forward the clock to September, let's say we get a green light from the provincial program, we will then come back to council with a formal legal agreement with all the meters of pipeline and the breakdown of how those numbers have been calculated, so that the city is assured it's a straight sort of in and an out. The other thing I will say is, we're basing those tax numbers on year one. So if that system grows in, say, year three, and we put a bunch of new main into service, other pockets off the same system, that money is not money that we expect the city, that the grant program is required to pay back. So any branches off this system over the, say, three to five years out, that is money, that's revenue that the city will keep. So it's really just the year-one projections of what that property tax revenue will be and a commitment to make that. So we'll continue to pay the tax, and then the city treasury would make a contribution back to the project equal to that tax amount from year one. So right now, what you're doing is basically supporting the principles set out by the program.
And to be clear, the property tax right now doesn't exist because your pipeline's not there.
Right.
So you're only paying tax on where the property, where the property that you're using to run your pipeline through.
Right, so yeah, it's the...
So we're not actually taking money out of our bank account to give it to you, this is money that you would be paying for tax normally as the tax, as the pipeline's laid, and because you're asking right now is to give you a bit of a waiver on that, so the money that you pay for those taxes for your pipeline, we turn around and give that one back to you, so it looks like we are giving you a contribution when in fact we're not, it's just a wash?
That's exactly, it's a wash. So it's an in and an out, and I think the reason, like I said, the reason I think the province did that, like with all provincial grants, the municipal portion.
Excuse me, and through you, Chair, so right now, the dollar value that you're basing it on is $2,017 value. If in fact that the taxes do increase over that time, that 217 will still stay, and you will pay on top of whatever the increased amount is?
Yeah, it's a locked-in number, so it'll be...
It's a locked-in number.
So if that pipe, let's say in year seven, has increased in assessment value by, let's say the assessment on that pipe's gone up by $2,500, let's just say.
Sure.
We would pay that to the city, and that would be a net positive to your, to your books. So there's no fiscal impact...
So currently, you're paying nothing because there's no pipe?
There's nothing there, right.
So you're basically saying, pretend there's no pipe there, just for a while, until we get it all locked in?
Basically.
All right.
And it's, just to point out, that's a requirement from the provincial government, not Union Gas, so that is what the province has...
But it's helpful.
It's helpful, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Marilla.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, you got my attention with respect to the ask, so I got some clarity from Dan McKinnon, but I also have a question for Alvin, if he'd like to come down and perhaps expand upon this very item. So based on what I'm hearing is that the application can only be submitted if we, as a city, provide that incentive as you've outlined. So through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, to Alvin, can you just briefly explain, is there a net loss to the city or not?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the councillor, the program requires a contribution from the city, as explained by Mark there. It's technically a wash, the pipe doesn't exist, they're not paying taxes. Hypothetically, if there was a pipe there, we're looking at, based on current day legislation and information that we have, $5,000 a year for 10 years, so that would be $50,000 in terms of contribution from the municipality to the capital construction project, and as Mark explained, in year 11 is when you would see profit, so to speak, from the taxes or see gain.
Okay, so the total, the total impact on the city that's a wash is $50,000?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the councillor, based on current day legislation and information that we have, the current tax assessment rate, et cetera.
I guess my only concern with this is, obviously, they're going to be seeking profits, can it be built in somehow that we at least receive interest on that $50,000?
That's a question that haven't been asked before, probably not. So the government has said that those contributions have to go to offset the capital shortfall, so they have said that the, let's say for easy math, it's a million-dollar project, and with our contribution and from the utility and the volumetric charge from the customer and the municipal portion, let's say it's $900,000. The government said that those dollars that the municipalities give have to just go straight to the capital costs, and then the shortfall above and beyond that, they'll fund. So that's not likely something that's possible, because it is going to be invested in the capital cost. And basically what that does, although in the scale of the project, these are multimillion-dollar investments, the municipal contribution fits into that pie, overall, it will reduce the per capita shortfall that the province is funding. So that's what their sort of thought was, that they will provide, they'll make it easier, hopefully, for councils to support, because it's not a net negative, but it will help on a net per customer basis reduce the capital shortfall associated with those projects before the government comes in.
Well, there is kind of a net loss, when you say that, if you're putting out money interest-free, there is, there's something to be said about providing interest-free. And that's hence my reason why, could there be some sort of incentive for the city to be part of this process?
Well, I think the incentive is in year 11 to, you know, 100 years of the life of a pipe potentially, there's a net benefit come year 11 to the city in perpetuity for something that without this program, there won't be any revenue for the city at all. So we're talking about $5,000 in new revenue in year 11. If we aren't successful in applying or getting the grant funding, that's revenue the city's never going to realize, right?
That's a valid point, okay. All right, thank you, and just lastly, is staff recommending that this particular...
Councillor, I don't know, maybe Madam Clerk can, but we will have a presentation next, following this.
Oh, okay.
Oh, from staff, if that helps.
Well, I guess the recommendation is to endorse, that's what it reads.
Do you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think what councillor Marilla, I think what the deputy mayor is saying is right now, we're still on the presentation from Union Gas.
Okay, fair enough.
After this presentation is received, Alvin would get up and provide his presentation, then you can debate the...
All right, thank you.
Thank you. See, no further questions, thank you for your presentation, and now I will ask for a mover to, sorry, to accept the presentation. Oh, we don't have quorum, sorry.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we'll go ahead with Alvin, if you want to come up and make your... All right, we'll go ahead with Alvin, if you want to come up and make your, begin your presentation. For Union Gas Limited Natural Gas Expansion to Sheffield Rural Settlement Area, Ministry of Infrastructure Natural Gas Grant Program, PED 17110, Ward 14.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, fellow committee members. As you heard this earlier, it is a proposal for expansion of natural gas to the Sheffield Rural Settlement Area. The reason why the report and some of the information wasn't available, as you had discussed earlier, the application deadline to the ministry is July 31st of this year. In order to secure a report with the internal deadlines, we had to bring it forward to this particular GIC committee in hopes that it would be ratified, whatever decision you make, on July 14th at council in time for the ministry deadline for their application. So that's a bit of an explanation as to why the taxation information wasn't available at the time of the writing of the report. But as expressed earlier, our finance group has reviewed the information based on current legislation and data, and concur that the $5,000 approximation appears valid at this time. So, in terms of the proposal, so city staff was approached by Union Gas Limited on May 12th, 2017, through Counselor Partridge on behalf of Counselor Pusuda. The proposal, as you heard, was to expand to the Sheffield Rural Settlement Area under the Ministry of Infrastructure's Natural Gas Grant Program. As demonstrated by Mark earlier, this is a proposed conceptual routing of note in terms of staff's position with respect to the route. We have not had an opportunity to review the implications of the route with respect to potential natural heritage concerns, cultural heritage concerns, and the like, but that would be vetted through the Ontario Energy Board process when they apply for that. But just to make note of that. So on January 13th, 2017, the Ministry of Infrastructure announced a $100 million natural grant gas program as part of the Ontario's Moving Ontario Forward Plan. The grant program, as you heard from Mark, is to support rural areas, municipalities, First Nations, and in uncorporated areas in securing natural gas. If you want more details with respect to the program, the Infrastructure Ontario website there and that particular link will provide you additional details, as well as the guidelines for the application that kind of go over some of the details Mark went through as to what are the requirements of the municipality on this proposal. So what types of projects are eligible? There are two streams. There's the expansion stream and the economic development stream. In particular, for the Sheffield project, it is proceeding under the expansion stream, which is projects that will help convert primarily residential connections to natural gas. So again, connecting those people in the Sheffield Rural Settlement Area. So who is eligible? As explained by Counselor Johnson earlier, the decision of which areas receive or may be applied for under this grant program is at the discretion of the natural gas distributor or supplier. In this particular case, it's Union Gas. In addition, as documented by Mark, the municipalities and First Nations must indicate their support for the natural gas grant program through a council or ban resolution, and as mentioned earlier, must be submitted by July 31st, 2017. As a point of clarification, in addition to what Mark was speaking to with respect to the resolution, in review of the guidelines for the application, the municipality does have the authority to include a letter indicating non-financial support and the reasoning behind it, should they choose so. This is just a quick overview of the process itself. So again, natural, sorry, Union Gas is the eligible applicant. They would apply to the program, as mentioned by Mark, assuming in September they receive a conditional approval. They would then go on to the Ontario Energy Board for approval of the actual physical pipeline, and accordingly, they would construct. With respect to the steps that Union Gas would have followed, they would have assessed the demand and benefits of the proposal, determined the costs and timelines for it, determined the financial need, submission of the application, this morning documentation, again, if successful, seeking approvals from the Ontario Energy Board, and entering into that contract mentioned by Mark earlier. In terms of how the province will review the application, it appears to be a weighted application. They've divided into primary, secondary, and tertiary criteria. So your first two primary criteria are the cost-effective access and the energy affordability of the project. With respect to secondary, you're looking at project revenues and customer engagement, greenhouse gas emissions, partnership and innovation, and the last being the tertiary, the geographic conditions. So I just wanted to point out with respect to the partnership and innovation, again, because the proposed route is draft, staff have not had an opportunity to engage with Union Gas to seek those kind of partnerships and innovation. So again, that would be, if they're putting in a pipe at the current time, are there capital projects that we can entertain at the same time to reduce the amount of work in the area? This last slide unfortunately is a little out of date now that we do have the tax information. So again, they are applying for the expansion to Sheffield under the expansion program. This is hopefully going today for a resolution with council on the 14th, so they can meet their deadline on the 31st. The taxation information, as confirmed earlier, is a $5,000 annual contribution for 10 years, totaling $50,000, with again, the net gain being in year 11 of the proposal. That more or less concludes my presentation, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Alvin, Counselor Green, Counselor Partridge, and Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, I guess, so what other examples would we have that would be like-for-like in terms of us partnering in this way for these types of asks?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, not aware of any other programs that are comparable. It's a new program brought forward through this Moving Ontario Forward Plan that's rather new. So to my knowledge, I don't have a comparable example in terms of program.
It just, it strikes me as a little bit strange with this particular policy, why the province, given the nominal amount provincially, why they wouldn't just kick in this incentive to make this happen and have a municipality sign on as a supporter in theory? But your recommendation at the time was not to support it, because we don't fully know and appreciate what those contributions might be. They've since come back and said $5,000 a year, is that right?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, yes, that's the approximation that we've confirmed.
And is there any possible variance to that? Is it possible that we can come back in year four and say, oops, something happened, we didn't realize the actual cost for your contribution is now $10,000 here?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, as explained by Mark earlier, it gets locked in for that 10-year period. I guess there is a possibility between now and actual final calculations, there could be some variation to that number, that's why it's an approximation of 5,000, but we expect it to be in that ballpark.
And Sheffield has about 300 people?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, I believe so, in terms of the physical rural settlement area. Again, we haven't explored exactly the pipe, how many particular properties that will service. That's a bit of proprietary information, but I'm sure we can have discussions with Union Gas to get you that detail if required.
And the question that I missed when the presenters were up is, are there opportunities, given that it's, I guess, on the border of Cambridge, are there opportunities along that corridor, that expanded corridor, to service other communities? I think that's where Partridge...
Through you, Madam...
Was going with regards, no, it's just a one-shot deal, that's it, straight to Sheffield, but nobody else?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, as explained by Mark earlier, this particular program will hook up Sheffield itself. Whether or not they decide to take on additional capital projects to branch off of that, wouldn't be part of this particular proposal. That'd be their own discretion as a corporation.
Because for me, well, I'll get into my comments later. I appreciate it, and it's a small number, it's not a huge number, but it is, it does feel like we're giving kind of a, you know, an interest-free infrastructure loan to Union Gas. That's just how it feels, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Partridge, followed by Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And, I mean, Alvin, would you characterize this as a loan that we're giving?
Through you, Madam Chair, I would. It's in essence a tax incentive program, no different than some of the programs we have through our Economic Development Group.
Right.
I guess that's the comparable that Counselor Green was requesting. This is much more macro, of course, it's a larger capital project, but in principle, yes.
Right. So it's not the millions of dollars that we sometimes do for other developers who come in. This is something that we're talking $5,000 a year over 10 years. And just to clarify too, the reason that the report in here does not include the financial information, can you just speak a little bit about that? Because the timelines were incredibly tight.
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, the timelines were very tight. We were notified by your offices in May, mid-May, with the application deadline due July 31st. Unfortunately, also with internal deadlines for reports and getting it to this particular committee, we expedited as quickly as we could. Their team had to do a bit of research, as well as limit the amount of proprietary information they were able to disclose to us. But at the end of, I would say, early July, late June, we were able to finalize that number with their taxation staff, and we do have comfort with that $5,000 ballpark figure.
Okay, thank you, and I do appreciate that. And as far as the location, Sheffield is definitely in Flamborough. It's not in Cambridge, and so the existing infrastructure that they would be tapping into, my understanding is, it is in the city of Hamilton, in the Sheffield area. That's what they would be tapping into. And I'm just trying to, you know, waylay any fears that we're crossing boundaries and not, rightly so, going to other communities and asking for them to pony up. So I'm quite delighted for the Sheffield residents. There's very little in terms of infrastructure that Sheffield and certainly some of the other rural settlement areas are able to tap into, simply because, you know, one of them being the distance that they are away from any certainly city infrastructure, even in terms of recreation centers and, you know, things like that, they just don't have that opportunity, or arenas, or even, you know, heaven forbid, schools. So I really think that this is something that will add to the community in terms of development, certainly going to add to our tax base. If I remember correctly, when the presenter made the presentation, that $5,000 per year, so we're not getting that money now, because there is no pipe in the ground, once the pipe is in the ground, that is the money that will be a wash, if you will. But if there's anything over and above that realized, so that's just based on year one. So if in year two, there was an increase in the taxes over that $5,000, then that money would come to the city. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, based on the information provided by Mark, yes. But we would probably want to discuss that with the ministry. I haven't had that particular conversation with the ministry, but in principle, that does make sense, yes.
Okay, thank you. And I guess the final question or point is that the application deadline is July 31st. There will probably be, or is expected to be a decision, Madam Chair, in September, October. And then at that point, there does need to be a memorandum of understanding or an agreement with the city of Hamilton, so that will be coming back to this council. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, yes. They are required to enter into a contractual agreement.
Right.
Whether it's this particular committee, I think will be determined exactly which committee it should go to.
Right, exactly. And I think it would probably be GIC, as that's where the original report is being dealt with. But I just want to assure my colleagues that, you know, any final agreements and any increase in financial obligations would be flushed out at that time, there would be another opportunity to vote on it. So I appreciate, Alvin, your presentation and your answers. And Madam Deputy Mayor, if you'll come back to me, I'll move an amendment to the recommendation that we, instead of endorse, that we support and provide the letter of support, and if you'll come back to me at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson, followed by Counselor Whitehead.
Yep, thank you. And I would fully support that motion coming forward. Alvin, thank you very much for coming to Ag and Rule. That was one of the things that everyone around that table were asking, is when are we next? And if we can help 300 homeowners who are literally being crippled by Hydro One's rates to heat their homes every winter, I'm all on board for this. And this is money that we don't see right now. If they put the pipe in, we would see it. They are going to pay us, we're going to turn around and give it back to them, and if the amount changes and it's increased, we get whatever's on top of that $5,000. To me, it's a win-win for the folks in Sheffield, and I'm hoping to see more and more urban or rural communities benefit from Union Gas. And I think now that we've got Matthew coming to Ag and Rule, I think he's going to be kidnapped and hogtied until he can commit to another community or two. But I'm in full support of this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Whitehead.
Madam Chair, what is the growth potential in Sheffield under the legislation? Is it pretty well locked in at the 300, I think I heard, 300 houses?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, it is a rural settlement area governed by the green belt, so in terms of opportunity to expand, it is limited. In terms of intensification, there are possibilities. There are rural area severances permitted within the rural settlement areas. Conceivably, lots can be created, additional homes, which would also tap into this particular service. But in principle, it's pretty static.
So in places to grow, what will be identified, the population level is today and what the population level will be in 10 years from now?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, because it's in a rural settlement area, it's not part of places to grow, it's not within the urban boundary.
What's the population today, through the chair?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, I believe it is 300 households, but I don't have the exact figure with me today.
So 600, 6 and 1/2?
Approximately.
And there's no liability or risk to the city?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, I guess you wouldn't say it's a liability or a risk. You are making a financial contribution. Again, it is in and out, as Mark had explained, the $5,000 doesn't exist today. Year 11 is when you will see that particular tax base coming to you as the agreement would have been completed by then.
Is that because it's not profitable for Union Gas to pay for the service, bring the service out themselves?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, I can't really speak to that particular aspect, but it is a requirement of the program itself that they are applying under. The program requires a financial contribution or indication of non-financial contribution with letter.
So the province has now legislated the municipalities to step up the plate to provide subsidies to these utilities?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, no, they're not obligating you. You have the right to refuse this application, and you have the right to refuse our recommend, the Counselor's motion, and Union Gas would have to reevaluate if they would take upon this capital project independent of the program.
Okay, so they're just taking advantage of a program that offsets their cost?
Counselor, I don't think you have to answer that.
Why do I, actually, I do?
I don't think you...
I don't think it's up to you to, I'm asking a question of the receiver, Madam Chair. So they're taking advantage of a program that offsets their cost?
Through you, Madam Chair, to the Counselor, I wouldn't, not going to use the word advantage, they are applying under a program offered by the Province of Ontario to expand natural gas services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Seeing no further questions or comments, move by Counselor Partridge, seconded by Counselor Johnson. Are we going to include the amendment to this one, or do we... Counselor Partridge.
Thank you. So we will need to amend the report.
Yes.
And the recommendation, I would amend it, that the proposed Union Gas Limited Natural Gas Expansion project with the required financial contribution from the city of Hamilton to the project and subject to the submission of the city of Hamilton's letter to the Natural Gas Grant Program application attached as Appendix B to this report be amended to support.
Madam Clerk, we move forward on that, seconded by Counselor Johnson. All those in favor?
Carried.
Carried.
And on the report is amended.
And on the report is amended. Counselor Pearson, Counselor Johnson, carried. And moving back to 6.4, I need a motion, a mover and a seconder for, to receive the presentation, moved by Counselor Johnson, seconded by Counselor Pearson. All those in favor, carried. Now, does the committee wish to move into closed session at this point to deal with a confidential item? Madam Clerk?
You, Madam Deputy Mayor, staff is requesting, if possible, that we do move up item 12.5 on the agenda, as we have a solicitor, an outside solicitor, so rather than having that party wait...
Moved by Counselor Green, seconded by Counselor Marula. All those in favor, carried. Five-minute break to move into closed session.
Thank you. Oops. You, Madam Deputy Mayor, just for clarification, because it is a little outside of her roadmap, item 12.5, bear with me for one second, so that I can read out the reasons for you.
I notice it's my time, anyone got my name?
We would be moving into closed session, respecting an update on the...
We would be moving into closed session respecting an update on the Ward Boundary Bylaw 17080 and the Ontario, an appeal to the Ontario Municipal Board Report LS 17015A, and that would be for reasons under the Municipal Act E and F litigation or potential litigation, including matters before administrative tribunals affecting the city and advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. Thank you. Madam Clerk, and we've already voted on it and that's fine.
Thank you.